Good evening, I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. Can we have roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Protem Wall.
Here.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
And Councilmember Woodard.
Attending remotely via teleconference.
That concludes roll call.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment?
There are no public comments.
Okay, and no one's waiting online?
Correct.
All right, thank you. Okay, so next is the city manager's report. Jeff Knighton?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of council, a few things to mention tonight. First, last night, we had an open house for our Main Street project, very well attended. Between 65 and 75 people were here. A lot of good information was shared, and a lot of good questions were asked. So, we were happy to be open with the community about what's going on, and some of the challenges that are ahead of us for that project. Next, Evergreen Playfield bathrooms. All the electrical connections are done, so that's great, getting that completed. We did send out a press release on Tuesday, along with other information to recruit our next council member. So, the interviews for that are scheduled for April 2nd and 3rd. If we do have, if we don't have as many applicants as we expect, we'll do everything on April 3rd, but we'll find out more about that following closing date on March 11th. And, let's see, on Monday, we're going to be closed for the holiday, for President's Day. And that's all I have tonight. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Comments? Councilmember Sonmore?
Do we have any applications?
We've received four so far.
Wonderful, we have interest. Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. Online, I think it was today, maybe it was yesterday, it's kind of a blur, someone posted an opportunity for scholarships, and they said, "Can someone tag whoever's responsible for potentially bringing back whatever we end up calling toward a terrace?" I just want to make sure that was drawn to your attention, because I actually didn't know that answer, so I didn't want to chime in.
I will look into that and make sure I keep council in the loop.
Thank you.
I thought that was for grants. I know it was myself, Sean O'Shaughnessy, that wanted to share that.
Okay, I'll take a look.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then we'll move on to the presentation by Edmonds, Wastewater, and the City of Edmonds interim public works director, Phil Williams. Kind of a familiar name here.
The wrong city.
Well, thank you, Mayor Wright, and councilmembers. Good to be back. In some ways, it feels very familiar. I thought I'd start with a little bit about how this partnership works, just to kind of lay the groundwork here for a discussion about a particular project, and also some future projects that we may be working our way into. As you know, Edmonds is the general partner in a partnership, a wastewater treatment plant, operating and maintenance and capital investment partnership, which Mont Lake Terrace is a huge member of it. 23.1417 percent of the capacity in the plant. The others are Olympic View Water and Sewer District, just about 16 and 1/2 percent, I think. And then, what was the Ronald Wastewater District, now City of Shoreline. So, the four of us are joined at the hip completely. And we'll get into that in a minute, how that works financially, but that's part of it. So, everybody has, owns capacity in this plant at a certain level, so many million gallons per day. I'm just going to hit the first slide, let's see, where is it? Oops, that's not it. I don't know whose code revisions those are, but they look interesting. I can't even see the cursor. Okay. There it is. Okay, sorry about that.
And then we got a share too.
Where's the share screen at? I know Jennifer knows how to do that, let's see here.
That was your bat signal.
That was kind of a, that was a weak cry for help.
We did get instructions before, too.
Can you just hit the share screen on that? Oh, that's the right way to do it, yeah, good point.
There we go. Slideshow.
Beginning's good. Oops.
You should be able to scroll where it's there.
Okay. And I said hello to councilmembers. I know Councilmember Woodward's there, I remember him as well, and good evening. So, the city owns and operates a conventional activated sludge treatment plant, which is the most common way to get to secondary treatment. Has a capacity of 11.8 million gallons a day, hydraulically, and you own 23.17 percent of that capacity. We provide treatment services to 80 percent of Edmonds. Kind of interesting, you'd think it'd be everybody, but the way our city's built, 20 percent of it goes to Linwood's Treatment Plant, which is right next door, which they are doing a $350 million upgrade of in the next several years, and we will have to pay our share, not you, as a partner of our plant, but our citizens will pay for that. And also, all of Mont Lake Terrace, and all of Olympic View Water and Wastewater District, and much of Shoreline. Not every bit of it, but most of it. Due to the regional nature of this treatment plant, other agencies pay, including you, a proportionate share of both operating and capital expenditures. The 23.17 percent never changes unless our capacity changes, so that's been static for the entire time. The way operations and maintenance expenses are divvied up, we keep track during the entire year, but also, at the end of it, we do a reconciliation, and we have flow meters throughout our system, so we know how much flow that Mont Lake Terrace sends our way, and all of the other partners, including ourselves. And so, we look at our total cost for the year to operate and maintain the plant, and then just do the fraction, and it isn't always 23.17, but it'll be pretty close to that. Right now, the city owns, I'll get to a slide in a minute that shows that, 50.787 percent, but we only pay about 47 percent of the O&amp;M cost, because that's the share of flow that we provide. If that makes sense. It says here, currently, we're open there 14 to 24 hours a day. Once this new project that I'm going to talk about comes online fully, that'll be 24 hours a day, five days a week, and then we'll be open, we'll have people there on the weekends too, of course, but it'll be, it will never be 14 hours a day. That's going to go up. And as I know you're aware, wastewater treatment is heavily regulated by U.S. EPA and the State Department of Ecology. All of our operators need to maintain certifications for a Group IV treatment plant, which we are. I think we have four operators that are certified at that level. And we're doing a lot to save energy, which also affects the O&amp;M costs that everybody pays. We've done seven or eight ESCO projects, I don't know if you're familiar with those, but that's a unique delivery system for capital projects in Washington State, on projects that are designed to save energy. So, the city enters a contract with the Department of Enterprise Systems, of all departments. We tell them what we want to do, and it's designed to save energy, and then they contract with us to deliver that project, and then we pick out an ESCO contractor, in this case, a company called Amaresco. There's one of seven that are certified by the state. And then, they go out and do the design, construction often, do the whole thing, and deliver the project. But it comes to the city with a guaranteed maximum price, and a guaranteed performance of the entire facility, and guaranteed energy savings, which is a pretty cool thing, and we've done a lot of those at the treatment plant. I'm not going to go through all of them, but talking about rates for just a minute, we don't charge a set rate for our partners, of course. We divide up the costs equally. The City of Edmonds gets no better deal than the City of Mont Lake Terrace in that regard. But, this graph, which I can't quite see all of at this point, but I think you can, these are retail rates. This is what we charge our own customers. I think it's a corollary and a pretty good comparison of where the city sits with its current costs of operation compared with many of our close by competitors, if you will. I don't know really competitors, but we do always compare rates with each other, and we're on the affordable side there. They still seem high, I know they go up every year, and it's disappointing, but our costs go up proportionately. There's a lot of ways to do, a lot of ways to do a contract like this, but this is share and share alike, hold hands, jump off the cliff kind of thing, nobody's getting a better deal than anybody else. This project, which we have started to work on, have been working on it for five years now, is to replace the existing worn-out old incinerator that we had for 30 years. EPA has laid the law down on incinerators, they don't like that technology for biosolids management. They'd prefer you do something else, and to get you to do that, they just keep raising the regulations up to the point where you can't afford to incinerate anymore. So, we were looking for a replacement technology. We wanted to do something that was environmentally superior to what we were doing, and that was affordable, and what we picked originally was a technology out of California called Bioforce Tech, making little biochar pellets out of biosolids. We were pretty excited about that, spent about a year working on it, but by the time we saw the numbers, it didn't save any energy, so we couldn't use it as an ESCO project. And it was more expensive than the next technology we looked at, which was gasification, which has been around a long time, not being used in this country on municipal biosolids. It's being used in Europe, it's being used in this country for animal manures and a variety of other feedstocks, but hasn't been used on a municipal biosolids project in the country until we signed a contract to do that. What it does, it heats up biosolids through a dryer, and then into the gasifier unit to 2,000 degrees Fahrenheit, which, that's hot. And the biosolids are pretty quickly consumed, and you can regulate what comes out as a end product into either a completely sterile mineral, like sand, it'll take it all the way to something like that, just sand, or if you run it a slightly different way, you can leave carbon in that product, both of which are things you can sell. And we're looking at markets right now to sell either the sand and/or the carbon-rich sand, which I would call biochar, and we'll be able to do both of those things, which is good for the environment. This is just the finances overall. You see, the project was a little over $26 million. We own 7.8, or 50.8 percent of it, so our share was 13.3 million approximately. Then you can see, we borrowed the money, the debt service reserves, issuance costs, the total bonds that we sold, and we didn't buy bond insurance, we didn't feel we needed to. And then you can see the debt service. And so, at the end, if you go down to the lower right, that all comes out to, this project alone caused our costs to go up by 7.67 percent, all by itself. And here's some other financial impacts that the project's looking at. There'll be a savings of about $341,000 a year in operations and maintenance costs. And then, again, looking at just Edmonds, because I don't have the numbers for all of your participation, but that gets deducted from our capital costs on an annual basis, our costs for debt service, and it comes out very close to the same number, about 6.43 percent. Still a lot, but the way that affected our then single-family rates was to go from $48.84 to $48.84, excuse me, $45.84 to $48.78, or about three bucks a month. And since we don't charge you rates, I can't really quote rates for you, but it should be in the same rough percentage, and here's how it gets split out. Edmonds at 50.787, 13.266, you saw that. There's Mont Lake Terrace at about $6 million for your share. Shoreline at 2 and 1/2, and Olympic View at 4.3. The status of that project is, its construction's about 95 percent complete right now. We've had the ability to run it several times as we worked up towards commissioning the plant, which was a very prescriptive thing, they had to run for 120 hours straight, and meet all the permit requirements, and then they've completed commissioning. So, we're getting ready to go into full-time operation of it, hopefully near the end of this month, or very early in March. We've also signed a six-month operation and maintenance contract with EcoRemedy, who were the people that supplied the technology package for the project, the dryer and the gasifier. And they'll run it for six months, probably for the first three months, they'll run it, and we'll watch and learn, and then for the last three months, we'll run it, and they'll watch and kibbitz, and hopefully, that'd be a great way to transition the project to city operation. We have discussions ongoing now with the Department of Enterprise Systems and Amaresco for closing out the project, and what that will look like financially. And I would say, this is a really good point for the technology we picked, this last bullet. I'm sure you've heard of PFOS, it must have been mentioned at some point here, per and polyfluoroalkyl substances, there's, I don't know, 40 or 50 of them, but as a group, they're the forever chemicals, and they come from a long list of different consumer products, and they are of a health concern. So, for anybody producing biosolids, they're in the biosolids when you finish processing them, unless you get it to the temperatures I'm talking about. So, if you're, which a lot of people are, they're taking biosolids to a Class B level, and then taking it out on agricultural land and spreading it out, or it could be silviculture with trees, there's a lot of approaches being taken, but EPA and this state are charging ahead with saying, "Hey, we may need to regulate that much more than we do, or have in the past." The nice thing about this technology, which we didn't know when we went into it, was it completely destroys PFOS, so we won't, we won't have to worry about that as an issue going forward.
It destroys what?
I'm sorry, what?
Destroys PFOS.
PFOS. This is the, yeah.
Can you tell us what that acronym stands for?
It's two things, polyfluoroalkyl substances and perfluoroalkyl substances. There's a bunch of them, there's really two that are the major concern, but it's a little bit like theoxins and furans, there's a million of them, but there's only one or two or three of them that are the most, of the most concerned. But just looking ahead, this isn't the only project that we're dealing with or working towards. The state has been developing for years, a whole new regulatory scheme on nutrients, particularly going to Puget Sound. The one that's the biggest concern, because it's salt water, is nitrogen. Nitrogen is typically the limiting nutrient for algal growth in salt water. There's plenty of phosphorus, so nitrogen becomes the limiting nutrient, and freshwater is just the opposite, typically. So, they're trying to write a general permit for all wastewater treatment plants that discharge to Puget Sound, on what they have to do, what kind of performance will be required to remove nitrogen from our discharges. They've been working on it for a really long time. We've tried one pilot project already to see what might work. There's some, there's a lot of ideas out there how to do this. We tried it, it kind of worked, but I don't think it was particularly satisfactory. We've got another one that's similar but not identical, that we're going to try this year, to see if we can come up with the most cost-effective way of removing nitrogen as we can for the least possible investment. But even so, most of those things would be approximately $10 million plus to do it at scale. The other thing I would mention, in terms of costs, that our treatment plant's 30-plus years old, that incinerator was original equipment in this, in this treatment plant, so it's not the only thing that's over 30 years old. There's a lot of pumps and motors and other mechanical and electrical equipment out there that are aging out as well. And so, I would just conclude that our capital needs are probably not going to decrease anytime soon, and most treatment plants are going through the same thing. Brightwater, maybe not, they're quite a bit newer than most of the rest of them, but I think that's all I had. If you have questions about any of this, I'd be happy to try to answer.
Councilmember Sonmore?
Minor, real basic, with growth and the Growth Management Act, let's say we're almost doubling the size of the area that you're talking about, how's that going to impact fees and your facility?
That's probably the best question you could have asked. Especially this nitrogen removal piece, there's a variety of ways to do it, but almost all of them tend to, if anything, reduce your treatment capacity. Typically, if you're trying to nitrify, and then denitrify to get rid of the nitrogen completely, it takes residence time, it takes time spent in a basin with certain kinds of, just call them critters, there's a lot of them, rotifers, bacteria, and other things that can do that process, but it takes time for them to do it, they're not real quick. And so, if you have to leave the wastewater in a tank longer, it means to get the same amount of water through that tank, the tank's got to be bigger, right, to have the same time spent. That's just a rough way to think about it, but, and that would therefore reduce the capacity of the existing system. Exactly how much, it's hard to say. We'll know more when, as we move forward with nitrogen removal pilot projects. But yeah, I mean, we have the same thing. I was talking to Gary, he said, "Your number's in the 22,000 range between now and 2040 or something, new people moving into Mont Lake Terrace?" At least, that's what PSRC is suggesting, and I think our number's quite a bit smaller, 9,000, but still, that's a lot of people. There's 30,000, and if you throw in Shoreline, and all of Olympic View's unincorporated area, and their incorporated areas, too, it could be a big number.
And there's, I'm assuming, if you don't get all the, what you need out of it faster, it's going to pollute Lake Washington quicker, or the salt water that we have here? And then also, I was just going to ask, with your incinerator that lasted 30 years, how long will this new one last?
It should be about the same. I think that's, you know, it's an ambitious but pretty realistic timeframe, I think. We took very good care of the incinerator, and I think milked a lot of life out of it. When you buy this kind of thing, they'll often say 15 or 20 years, but you know, if you do good maintenance on it, and you can drag that out of ways, but eventually, you're right, you've got to replace it.
And you'll need a bigger tank to hold more water.
Laura, can you move that a little bit?
Oh, yes. It's not that big a deal, but I'm just thinking that your facility will have to expand with more tanks, and maybe another incinerator, so you might be looking at doubling cost over, you know, as our growth increases, so.
Yeah, you're right, the cost of providing this service, and I'm sure your next speaker will probably say the same thing, the cost of running these kinds of businesses don't necessarily mirror the general rate of inflation for consumers, and that's been that way for a really long time, but I don't know what to say any beyond that. It's, yeah, absolutely.
Just one thing, so, your public works director, Gary Schimmick, just wanted to address one thing on the capacity and the population growth. Phil, you and I were talking about this today, we're both working on this, is trying to address the infiltration and inflow into our systems, right? So, that will, by doing that and being aggressive about that, we're going to be sending less storm water, or clean water, and that may mitigate some of the extra flows coming from new population, maybe mitigate some of the capacity needs for, you know, if you have to expand to the nitrogen. So, we are working on that together, too. So, we are concerned about that, but there's ways, too, that we're looking to help ourselves.
Right, and as we build, and Phil, I forgot to say, it's good to see you again, it's nice to see you.
Good to see you.
It's nice to see your familiar face.
And Gary's right on that, I guess I would just add, there's kind of two things, there's the hydraulic capacity of the plant, how much water you can take through it, and then there's treatment capacity, too, they're slightly different. But it is likely that with all these people that are supposed to be moving in here in the next 20 years or so, you know, there's going to come a point where we're going to have to have some serious conversations about what is our best option at that point, and we do have some room down there that I've, I know the whole time I've been there, we've been keeping a hold of and not wanting it to develop right across the street from the plant. It was called Old Public Works, where it's not huge, but there's some room that we could expand. We'll have to see how that goes.
Yeah, it's a beautiful piece of property down there.
Yep, yep.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Phil, I always appreciate your education, and when you share things with us, it's nice to have you back. I guess, just a quick question, kind of following up on some of the conversation about things that we can do. I know that we are taking steps as a city to look at ways to reduce, you know, unnecessary flow, but I guess, are there things that our residents could be doing? That could be a question for either of you, but are there things that our residents could be doing to help ensure that only what needs to go through the system does?
Well, yeah, I mean, garbage disposals are always an interesting household item. A lot of things get put in there, many of them shouldn't be in there, but that's all, most of it, hopefully, organic material that certainly is going to be treated at the treatment plant, but it does add more biological oxygen demand on the system. Composting that would be a much better outcome. You know, you do have, most, I think all your residents have compost collection available to them. Encouraging that, I think, is a really good idea. A lot of that ends up to be limbs and grass and stuff, but there's household waste, too, that are organic that could go in there.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to chime in and say, it's great to see you as well, Phil. I was disappointed I couldn't make it in, battling a bug. That said, I wanted to verify something, because I just had a thought, which is, are you still giving, or now, are you, I should say, giving these updates at whatever the new Ballenger Lake Macalure Creek Forum is called? I know we expanded it to incorporate this, and I feel like this topic came across that forum before, which is really a heads up to whoever the alternate is, now that I believe Councilmember Payne Donovan was our lead. So, that's my way of saying, am I the alternative? Am I back in motion? So, offline questions, but again, great to see you, and just curious how we can stay more informed than just having to invite you back, because I'm pretty sure you maybe present there.
I have not been asked to during this current period of time that I've been in Edmonds. If you're interested, certainly could do that. We have a council member and a staff member that go to those meetings now, I think, pretty routinely. Pat Johnson, you've probably seen him there, and Susan, they trade that off about once a year, so I'll take your word for it, she's the current one.
Yeah, because I'm pretty sure I've heard this update there before, but I was just thinking, it'd be curious to see if you're going to be responsible for doing more of those, because it's all connected, right?
It is.
But the takeaway there was really for the city manager as well. So, but the, the takeaway there was really forward, the city manager as well, which is to figure out what seats we have to place that Rory has vacated.
Okay.
Okay. Did you want to go next?
Mayor Potemal. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you all. Yeah, again, Phil, it's great to see you again, and welcome back. Following up on Councilmember Salmore's question, I, I wanted to loop back on the capacity issue and really get a better understanding of what kind of capacity is in place with, you know, the current, current facilities, the current projects, planned projects, and at what point do we, based on our, our planned growth, based on our, everybody's updates, I guess, right? Shorelines, Edmonds, Mountain Lake Terrace, and, and the unincorporated areas. What capacity, at, at what point in, I mean, does it cover the planned growth over the next 20 years? Or is there a period in the next, you know, say 10 years that we think that we might need to take a serious look at capacity issues?
I'm trying to remember when our last comprehensive wastewater plan was put together in Edmonds. I know I was there, but it seems like it's been quite a while since that was updated. And I think in the next update, you know, the gasification plant wasn't in there before, the nitrogen removal thing really wasn't nailed down very well, it still isn't fully nailed down. I think those would be two key things to focus on, and then look at the growth within the entire scope of the plan, including our partners. So adding up all these new people that are going to be coming in, I don't, I don't know that that's really up to date, to be honest, right now. Yeah.
And Phil and I haven't talked about this yet, but as I think all of you know, we are working on our, our comp plan right now. So, and I think someone had the question before, you know, how we're coordinating, and we will definitely be working with Phil and others and, you know, doing that update which you're talking about, and, you know, maybe do a little, you know, work, work together on that. But we want that reflected, the future conditions of Edmonds Plant reflected in our study, too. So when, when we come back to you, we'll actually, we'll bring that back up. And maybe Phil will join us, if he's still here.
So in other words, as we delve into our comp plan update on the stormwater facilities, we'll, we'll have clear answers on capacity issues at that time.
Yes, as best, yes. And they'll be based on the best information that we have from, from Phil.
Very good.
And, and our system as well, of course.
Perfect, thank you. And so then, okay, stepping back, looking at the current planned project, was going to add roughly 3%, about, I'm sorry, $3. So about 6.5% to 7% to our customers.
And I don't know about your customers, I was.
Yeah, no, I, I'm getting to.
I just know that's about what we've.
Yeah, I'm getting, I want to get to, because we've got another whole, other pieces that we have to put into our, our plan, right? I just, but that's a base number that we're going to have to recognize, we're going to need to address. And then I wanted to get to the 10, the nitrate going into the Puget Sound. What was it? Nitrogen. Going into the Puget Sound, and the, what's going to be needed to fix that? What kind of timeframe are we looking at for adding an additional $10 million to that?
I think it's going to be some kind of an iterative process in the permit, so let's say you've got to get to 15% removal, and I'm just making this up, but I mean, I think the permit will be structured like this, maybe 15 or 20% removal or something in three years, and then.
Increase over time.
50% removal in the next five years or something. I don't, I don't know, they've talked about ideas like that, phasing it in, and they have to, because the cost of doing this is just unbelievable. If you can think about 10 million plus, it could be more than that. I really don't know, but for a plant serving, you know, our town's 40, 42,000, and like, effectively, it's about 80,000 people or something total. And then ramp that up to what King County's got to do, and Pierce County's got to do, it's billions and billions of dollars that are involved in achieving the goals that ecology has for nitrogen removal.
Okay, and that's going to be part of our comp plan update also, have better numbers built in there. And then help us put this in perspective of, as, probably as much a question for Gary, and maybe should wait until after our next presentation, just because it's all combined, right? It's all part of the picture. But when we talk about a comprehensive plan and our, our wastewater treatment, that is, what, give us an idea of what percentage of our current bill, I'm getting ahead of ourselves because that's really a comp plan. I get, I get it. I'm just trying to put it in perspective now for us to understand that this is, how much of a piece of the whole picture of our stormwater, it's not stormwater, our wastewater treatment and our water facilities are we looking at when we're talking about what we're, our work together with Edmonds?
I, I can get you, get you that number. I was actually looking at a spreadsheet today, but I can't remember the number offhand. But in our, in our budget that, you know, Carolyn and I and others worked on, we have a line item that tracks Edmonds, period. And then we have the total, total cost, so we can get that percentage. And then what we have, what we presented at the '25, '26 budget was an inflation factor every year. But what I just thought of as, as Phil was talking, too, is we can, you know, look back, too, at the historical records of the costs and kind of play with the percentages. But what I'll commit to coming back to you, or provide to the city manager, is the percentage of our wastewater budget that, that the Edmonds services. That'll be very easy to get.
Very good, thank you. I might add, I think typically, I don't know what the situation is here now, but wastewater usually is bigger very often than water. Not by a lot, but bigger. And then stormwater is, you know, not nearly as big, but still significant.
All right, thank you so much.
And my, my question, just to remind everybody, this is 100% of Mountain Lake Terrace, right? It's not 100%? It's weak at 27, 23-point something percent.
So about, I was just looking at the numbers today, so our, and we have, I had a graphic, I could have brought it, but I'll, I could provide the city manager with this, but roughly for our external wastewater costs, right? If there's, there's three, three, three line items. One is Edmonds, one is Shoreline, it used to be Ronald Wastewater, and one is Briar. And I believe Edmonds is about 87% of that. And then Briar is next at about like 7% to 10%, and then Shoreline's just like 3%. And that's total annualized cost.
But, but 100% of Mountain Lake Terrace's water is part of that 20-something percent? Because we don't send it to anyone else?
No, I'm sorry, we do, yes. We send, so we send, so 80, 87% of our wastewater flows go to Edmonds on average.
Okay.
And the other 13% eventually go to King County. And two pathways, one to Briar, then to King County, and one to Shoreline, then King County. We have a complicated system. I will kid you not, it's not easy to figure out. And there's, it gets even more complicated with some flow swaps, but generally, that's what it is.
All right.
I just want to say that your lowest cost provider, though, is, is Edmonds.
Touche. Because I know wastewater, water, stormwater, sewer, it, it just gets really complicated.
It does.
Okay.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming. All right, so we move on. So next is the presentation of the Alderwood Water and Wastewater District with the, AWWD General Manager, John McClellan. Now we're talking about water.
Gary Schimmick, again, your Public Works Director. I wanted to give John a little bit of an introduction, because you all know Phil so well. But I will tell you, John is as articulate and as intelligent as Phil, so you're in for a treat. I met John about, oh, seven to 10 years ago. We were, we were on a regional wastewater committee, worked together very well. And John is, of course, the General Manager with AWWD. He's been there for, I think, 2017, and City of Everett before, but I think this is the first time here, and I really think you're going to enjoy hearing from him.
Thank you, Mr. Schimmick. And thank you, Mayor, Mayor Potem, and council members for having me in here. It's a pleasure to visit you and share what we do, and, and maybe refresh your knowledge of what service we're providing. So as Gary mentioned, my name's John McClellan, I'm the General Manager at Alderwood Water and Wastewater District. We serve your community with a wholesale water relationship. Put that in perspective, maybe comparing dollars with, you know, services you're getting. In 2024, Alderwood billed Mountain Lake Terrace $1,152 for drinking water wholesale, and the consumption was somewhere on the order of 707,000 cubic feet. So I got, I suppose, maybe a, a rough idea of where the water comes from, how it gets to you, you know, what is, what does Alderwood do in the whole train of, of passage here? So the water starts up in the Spada Lake Basin, and Spada Lake is the source, the Sultan River is the source, Spada Lake Reservoir is really an impoundment of the Sultan River up in the mountains. And the impoundment there, Colmanback Dam, is used, one, to store the water for drinking water, but also by Snohomish County PUD for production of hydroelectricity. The treatment plant for the drinking water is at Lake Chaplin Reservoir, which is a little bit downstream. I did spend 15 years working for Everett Public Works, and three of those years I spent managing the water treatment plant up there. So I'm fairly familiar with the facility, how the water's produced, and, and the staff that take care of it. When I was working as Operation Superintendent for Everett Public Works, I was also responsible for the wastewater treatment side. So that's where I got the background in the wastewater and ended up with Alderwood, and that's where I met Gary. So I started at Alderwood in the end of 2017 as their Engineering Director, and then for the last couple of years, I've been the General Manager. So we buy 100% of our water that we sell to our customers from Everett. So we buy over half the water that Everett produces. We are their major, major customer. We have in our district about 90 million gallons of storage, which is quite a bit. So in terms of storage of water, we're really well situated. In terms of that, I don't have any near-term concerns about running out of water. The rights we have under contract with the City of Everett are also much greater than we're actually taking advantage of. Our system peaks around 53 million gallons, and our average use is probably like 26 million gallons a day. Of course, you folks are, are just a smaller component of that. The, the, the cost of the system is, really comes down to taking care of, of the assets that are in place. Since we do have all this storage, we're really trying to look after the valves and the pipes and the pumps that are serving the water to our customers. We do have plans on increasing storage, building another steel reservoir, probably on the 10-year timeframe, and that would be to serve the area mostly east of I-5 that we're responsible for. And if you're not familiar with our service area, we serve Mill Creek, we serve parts of Muckeltoe, we serve Linwood as a wholesale customer, Edmonds as a wholesale customer, yourselves as a wholesale customer, Briar, we, we vend water retail to the northern half of Bothell, and then all the unincorporated Snohomish County between all those communities. So we have a fairly large area that we serve. In terms of rates, we work with the City of Everett on an annual basis to develop those rates. Now, the benefit that we have is that we're not subject to the rates that they develop by ordinance, which all their other wholesale customers do, they're subject to. We have a contract, a 50-year contract with the City of Everett, and so we have the ability to negotiate in a different way with the city for the rates. We are stepping into the rate negotiation period now, and typically, that takes some time. There's typically some back and forth in order that we can be assured that we understand the basis for the rates that they're, they're suggesting to subject us to. Maybe that's a mischaracterization. But we go through this every year, and we have a really strong finance team. And I'm providing that preamble, because really what it comes down to is we don't have rates prepared yet, because we haven't had the opportunity to have that back and forth with the City of Everett yet. We're just beginning that conversation now. But it can get fairly complicated, because the way they develop their rates involves a set of funds that are different than the funds we use. And so there's usually a bit of translation while we figure that out. And I'm happy to say that my finance director and finance manager are, are very, very detail-oriented, and they're very, very interested in understanding exactly what goes into those rates, and it is a fair inclusion that actually applies to us and the water we buy from them. So I, I think we have a really good team working on this. It, it does take some effort, we're just getting into it now. We would like to have these rates developed sooner, but because of the time that the City of Everett needs to develop these, it typically is going to run us into April or May before we have those rates. As soon as we develop those, then we will certainly share those with you. Happy to come back here and go over those with council, if, if you wish. Equally happy to share them with Gary, and, and he can share them with you that way. Before I, you know, spend any more time talking, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Do we have any questions or comments? Councilmember Murray. Steve, I know you're up there.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, John. Nice to meet you, and nice to have you here. I guess a couple of follow-up questions. So you talked about capacity not being used. How much capacity is it that we have that we're not using, that I guess that the system, the Alderwood water and wastewater, isn't using currently?
So we have, we have some really big steel, steel reservoirs in North, North Linwood, where our headquarters and our MNO facility is, three 20-million gallon tanks, roughly. Those are some of the largest tanks in, in the Western US. They were built very large in anticipation of the growth of this area. We still haven't tapped out, really, the, the need for those in terms of satisfying the requirements for storage with the Department of Health. So the Department of Health, when they're reviewing your comprehensive plan, they want to know you have adequate fire storage, adequate storage to care for your day-to-day demands and for your peaking as well. So you have storage needs that basically vary over the year, and then if you're subject to a large fire, that's going to impact it as well. So it's kind of hard to give you a really good answer on that question. But I think maybe one way to look at it, as I mentioned, we're not looking to build any additional storage for probably 10 years or more.
Great. And you said we're not currently using, we, I guess I'm talking about we in terms of Alderwood, but not using all of the capacity that we, that you have contracted with Everett for?
Correct.
I, I guess in terms of that capacity, how much, I guess, is, are we close to that capacity? Are you close to that capacity?
No, we're not close to that capacity. So as I mentioned, our average demand for, for our entire system is somewhere around 26 million gallons a day. Our peak is low 50s, probably around 53, our peak demand. The rights we have by contract with the City of Everett are probably close to twice that.
Okay.
So contractually, we're in a fairly strong position. Now, the City of Everett has the current capacity to produce probably around 105 million gallons a day of drinking water with their treatment plant. And we buy average of 26 million gallons a day. They probably, system-wide, use about that much, a little less. So if you look at it in terms of the average demand, it looks like there's a lot of margin there. However, when you're looking at summer peak demands, it gets much closer to the actual capacity of the plant. So Everett's probably starting to look at increasing plant capacity within the next 10 years. That gets to be rather expensive capital project as well. And I haven't seen any numbers on that, but just recalling the plant capacity and the growing demands in the region.
Interesting, okay, thank you. And then you mentioned the 50-year contract. I guess I'm curious, how many years do we have left on that?
I believe it expires in, in or around 2050, actually.
Okay, awesome, awesome. Well, I guess maybe one final question. I know when I, like, are there tours of some of these facilities?
There are. There are.
Oh, okay, all right. How does one go about securing a tour of one of those facilities?
So if you're interested in touring Everett's facilities, the water shed, the reservoirs, the treatment plant, the best person to contact would be Kathleen Baxter, who is their Public Information Officer at Public Works. And I can get that information to Gary as far as contact information. If you're interested in touring Everett's system, which is not as exciting, you know, Gary can get ahold of me.
Wonderful. Well, thank you, and I appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Councilmember Porter, did you have your hand up earlier?
I did, I did, and you may underestimate what excites us. That said, I wanted to thank you. I hope you get a laugh out of that. I did want to back up and just say thank you for being here.
Of course.
You were introduced as it's your first time here, which makes me feel better because I know you had a Commissioner retire.
Yes.
And I RSVP'd to attend, so I could go meet you all, and then my work schedule changed, so it was wonderful to have you there, and then I messed up this time, and I'm not there. But I look forward to you returning. That said, mine's more of a, I don't even know if you can answer this, but it's more about the other concerns. Spada Lake, now let me pause and say, I'm a San Diegan, so I have watched giant lakes dry up right in front of your eyes in your lifetime. Spada Lake, of course, is up in the hills, so probably less likely with the snowstorms, but I spent a lot of time in Sultan, which is growing rapidly, which is a long way around the horn to say, are there implications for those of us downstream that we should be thinking about? Perhaps not in my personal lifetime, but in the spirit of our Growth Management Act and Comprehensive Plans, should we start planting some seeds, pun intended, to hopefully germinate for the future councils? Because again, there's a lot, I'm sure you know, a lot of growth happening in Sultan, and I just presume they're pulling from Spada Lake as well.
Yes, in fact, City of Sultan is one of the wholesale clients of the City of Everett. Most of the towns and cities along the US2 corridor between there and the City of Everett are wholesale customers. The city also sells water to Snohomish County PUD, which has a number of really small systems it vents to. The, the, of course, of course, the lake level, the reservoir level in Spada does vary, can vary quite a bit. And again, a large part of that is because of the hydroelectric facility demand. So there's, there's really three big demands on the water system up there. There's the demand for fish flows, which takes precedence from everything else. There's the demand for hydroelectric, which is non-consumptive, so the water gets returned back to the river when it's used. And then there's the City of Everett's rights for the consumptive use of making drinking water, which does not get returned back to the river, of course. It ultimately ends up in wastewater treatment plants and then back into the sound. So the challenges with storage of water up there are becoming more of an issue because of climate change. And the effects are that we're not seeing strong, as strong, snow packs last as long into the season. And if you've studied the issue at all, you realize that the snowpack is basically a second reservoir. And the longer that snow stays snow, as opposed to melting, that allows us to rely on that as basically a large store of water, and it gives us more flexibility in how we take advantage of the reservoir and its levels. If that snow melt isn't there, if it's melting quickly, then that means there's going to be a lot more pressure on using the reservoir itself, and the competing demands are going to start to conflict at some point, like they did in 2015 during the drought. And I hope that answered your question, Councilman, but if it didn't, please let me know.
Yeah, I mean, that does, because it kind of brings it to that bigger picture, and it's not so much the houses that are coming in as much as it's the environment providing. So that tracks. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess as, as a point of comparison, that there's three, three or four large water purveyors in the region. There's Everett, there's Seattle, and Tacoma. And then you can count Cascade Water Alliance as well, because they do have Lake Taps as a resource, although it's not developed for drinking water yet. Of those three, Everett has the most water per capita available for its service area. So as things dry up and get more impacted by climate change, Everett's in a better position than either Seattle or Tacoma systems because of that.
So you, you hit on-
Thank you so much, and, oh, sorry, I was gonna say-
Oh, go ahead.
Thank you so much for the response, and let me apologize to the CED team sitting in the background there, which is to say, I don't know how people don't think Public Works is the best department. So just kind of put that out there. It's so fascinating and things that people take for granted. But nonetheless, thank you for the report and for the details.
Certainly.
Thank you. So you hit on the snowpack, and eventually that is, hopefully not, because there's still a lot of capacity still for Everett. But before that, we use the Artesian wells, and I, I was told many years ago that there's still tons of water down there, but it's hard to get to. And I know you have one Artesian well still open for the public, and the line is always so long, you don't even want to get one gallon over there because it's not worth the time.
It's, it's, it's costlier to, to, to develop and operate a well system, and that's why ultimately Alderwood moved to buying its water from the City of Everett, because truly you, you get the, the benefit of the scale of the operation. Well, wells are costly because they're, they're distributed, they're, they're more numerous to satisfy the same demand. Each one has a slightly different water quality character you have to account for. And so it's, for a large community, it's, it's not as cost-effective. Although we still do have the Artesian well, and it is very popular.
Too popular.
And we don't charge for it, but we'd be happy to sell it to somebody given the right price.
Yeah. Well, thank you for putting, making it so accessible with parking and everything too in there. But eventually, we are going to lose snowpack. I hope not, but. Is there something wrong?
Hand up from one of my staff.
Oh, okay.
Hey, man, we see that your hand is up.
Yeah, I, I have a question for John. I, I know that you, you said that there are some unused capacity with Everett. Is that the situation where, you know, can you store the unused capacity and use it at a later day, or is it a, a use it or lose it scenario?
Well, we, we have it under contract as essentially, when we, it basically is, is a demand basis so that as our system grows and our demand grows, we can tap into that demand and, and call in that, that demand under the contract. And I'm sorry if I, man, if I didn't understand your question quite right.
Yeah, you know, in some water rights situation, you can actually store the unused allocation, right? And then call it in at a later time when you need it, basically. So is that a situation with Everett, or, or is that not the case?
I think, I think that is our situation, since we do have, since it is addressed in our contract, I, I believe that is our situation, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, yep.
Councilmember Salmore?
My question's on the veins of what everybody else kind of talked about, but with SOCal, and I work with some people in SOCal, so it's kind of fresh in my mind of if we had the perfect climate change, weather change, and say, I know when we had a fire on our island, we had helicopters come in and, and take water out of our lake, but let's just say, I don't know, like Breyer and Shoreline or something was all on fire, how would that capacity equate to what happened in California? Would we have enough water being able to come through to handle such a large fire like that? Or how is that determined? I'm sure you guys have probably thought about that, and we talked about the snow caps and, you know, Spada Lake, and who uses the water, and I'm thinking, you know, there's a possibility at some point that could happen.
Yeah, I think in some ways, our situation would be comparable to the fires in, in California in terms of the storage they had in the neighborhoods and how that, how they ran out. And that comes down to when, when a community is designing and a water system is designing for fire flow and fire storage, they're designing it based on, they're imagining there's going to be maybe, for example, three big fires at once, not 10 or 20 or 50. And that was where things broke down in California, is they had far more fires going on at once than the system was designed to handle. It just, it just isn't designed to handle that, and frankly, you couldn't, you couldn't design a system to handle that magnitude of fire, because nobody would pay for it. It would just be too much. And then you mentioned about the, the forest fires, the wildfires, and helicopters. We, 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 when I worked for Everett, we did have a lot of conversations with Department of Natural Resources, because we had a lot of concerns about if there's a fire, we don't want firefighting chemicals dumped in the reservoir or dumped in, in the, in the area where is the collection basin for that. And so we had a lot of, and I think they continue to have those conversations to get assurance from Department of Natural Resources that they'll be very careful, understanding that is a regional drinking water source, and, and they don't want to put firefighting chemicals in that area unless they absolutely have to, to control the fire. So there has been actually a lot of discussion in the past about those larger regional threats, including firefighters, and what do we do about it, and who do we, who do we talk to to coordinate?
Anyone else? Okay. Oh, yeah. All right, I guess there are no, no other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming.
Appreciate it.
I did, did note that there was a request to tour the water facilities, but not the wastewater facilities, and I just found that interesting.
I was going to ask about, was, was that first picture, the picture of the wastewater facility? Okay. Uh-huh. And that's close by, so that's an easy one.
I will say, since we are doing, are we transitioning for a moment? No, maybe-
We had one. Thank you. Shall we take a three-minute break then? Okay. All right, we'll be back at 8:10.
I will say, my son took a tour of Brightwater with his class.
Thank you, we're back. And next on our agenda is the review of the ordinance amending MTMC 1.15 and 8.15 for code compliance with our economic, who are we? With our staff. Well, it says Kristi, and Kristi is here, though.
Yeah. Okay, let me get this set up. Great. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of council. It's good to see you all again, those of you who are here. This evening, I'm presenting proposed updates to the municipal code that will improve certain sections and ensure more effective and equitable penalty assessments. The proposed revisions have to do with yards, heavy equipment and commercial vehicles, building and construction materials, backyard camping, penalty caps, and unsafe conditions. Currently, the zoning chapter defines, oh, sorry, the proposed revisions have, no, start again. Currently, the zoning chapter defines yards, but the nuisance chapter has no definition. This creates potential confusion over what constitutes a nuisance in certain yard areas. This is a diagram from the zoning chapter. It shows the yards as defined from the property line to the setback. I've added a house so you can see the gray area left behind. By adding a clear definition of a yard to the nuisance chapter, we can remove any confusion about enforcement and make sure the rules are consistently applied. So we were looking at before, between the required setback area and the primary structure, you have this gray area where if we use the zoning definition, all of the trash that you're seeing in this photo would not be enforceable. This definition will clarify the boundaries where nuisance rules apply, ensuring consistent Heavy equipment includes things like tractors, backhoes, and even forklifts. We have regulations for parking and storage of RVs, utility trailers, motor vehicles, and commercial vehicles, but nothing for heavy equipment. The nuisance code dictates where vehicles may be parked, with the exception of commercial vehicles, which shows up in the zoning chapter. So you could see a tractor in this photo, or an excavator, rather. It is parked in somebody's backyard in town, and we have nothing saying they can't have it there, or even in the front yard. We propose adding a definition for heavy equipment and creating specific regulations about where it can be parked and stored in residential zones. Here are the code sections that would be affected, so we're also going to add to the nuisance code where a commercial vehicle may be parked in a residential zone. Right now, our code limits the outdoor storage of building materials to ongoing projects only. However, there's a loophole allowing never-ending storage if someone simply claims the project is ongoing. To prevent indefinite outdoor storage, we propose adding the underlying section. Materials associated with projects that do not require permits must be cleared from unenclosed areas within 90 days unless an extension is granted by the Director of CED We had a situation come up where a family decided they wanted to camp in their front yard during especially hot weather. A neighbor of theirs complained. Our code, as it is today, is very restrictive on anyone using a tent to sleep outdoors on residential property. There's no true separation between an ongoing homeless encampment and a children's backyard sleepover. In a separate section, our code allows residents or their guests to sleep in an RV for up to two weeks out of every six months on their property. We'd like to add specific rules for backyard camping that would be based on the same guidelines we use for RV occupancy. This way, recreational backyard camping stays within reasonable limits but isn't prohibitive. This is the big one. The good news is almost all violations are corrected before fees come into play. However, penalties and fees for code violations can accumulate indefinitely. There's some discretion regarding when they are imposed. This table shows our code as it is currently relating to penalties and violations. These aren't all of our penalties, just the ones we're proposing to change the cap by adding a cap. The first part, code enforcement, is the default when no penalty is listed in a specific chapter in the code. The code does not distinguish between severity of violation types. Implementing penalty or fee caps would benefit any responsible party as well as the city. It would mean we would have a $10,000 penalty limit on vegetation or vehicle-type nuisance versus $100,000 limit for commercial property performing an illegal demolition. Because fees could add up quickly, there's been hesitation in applying them. They're meant to act as deterrent, but in some cases, fees haven't been enforced, causing cases to drag on for years without resolution. Going forward, we would apply fees with a bit of frequency as opposed to none at all. And it's important that we set reasonable caps on how much someone can be charged. These caps would not include additional city costs, which would be charged separately. We're not alone. There are other municipalities putting- There are other municipalities putting caps on their fees. This is the language we'd like to add to the code involving penalty caps. There's an exception to any kind of cap if the violation involves unsafe conditions. And this is the table that shows what they look like. You'll note that the commercial cap is higher in most instances. Along with penalty caps, we're proposing a clear definition of unsafe conditions in line with the International Building Code. This is our first wave of code revision proposals. As we continue testing our code and finding gaps, or perhaps things that are too severe, we'll continue to bring them to you. On that note, we've been discussing a code path that would allow for inspection and quicker action with vacant or abandoned buildings before they go years on and unchecked. We would appreciate any direction council has to offer on that front, or for any other revision suggestions.
All right. Do we have any questions, comments?
I'll just start to get the conversation started. Because trailers, that's it, well, RVs, we had big conversations on that about being two inches into the, Brian shakes his head, two inches onto the sidewalk, but I don't think I'll go on that one. But with trailers and yards, I know in my area, there's been people who've had trailers in their yards for years. In fact, we used to have a trailer growing up, but it used to sit in our front yard. But I believe people may be living in there. I don't keep track, just based on sometimes the cars out there and the lights are on and stuff. But, you know, now, looking at Mount Lake Terrace, it used to be that when I first got on council, we were not going to take any more low-income housing into our city. We wanted other cities to absorb it. Well, that's all changed. And now we're looking at people living wherever they can. So I don't know if we want to have dialogue. What do other cities do with trailers in their yard? Because if they're in their backyard, I mean, you would have to track if they were living there. I, I know there's all sorts of different things, but I know there's a lot of cities with, you know, trailers parked on the street or RVs, but trailers in the backyard, are you seeing a lot of issues with that, or in yards? People living in?
Yeah, it comes up. People can have trailers in their backyards. They can't be occupied. And so there, there's that temporary allowance of two weeks out of every six months, but unless the area is zoned for mobile homes, then nobody can occupy a trailer or an RV in a yard.
In their backyard? Because at one point, it's a long time ago, if we couldn't see what was going in the backyard, you couldn't do anything about stuff. And so...
That's a different thing, enforcement versus the code itself, right?
Yeah. So I'm just wondering, you know, where do we stand on that? We're always talking about housing people, but I'm just bringing it up for conversations, and that's why I wanted to know if it was a big issue having in our city right now. Are you seeing a lot of that?
I am, but I would say if no one's complaining about it, I, I don't go around looking for people living in trailers. And so I, I certainly don't go knocking on doors accusing people of doing that. It would have to be fairly obvious or for somebody to complain for me to investigate it.
And then, I'm switching gears here, with the cap, right now, there is no cap, but you want to put a cap on it. So this goes into another philosophical conversation with increased inflate, or, you know, everything being inflated in cost. Costs are not going down at any time. And so cities are looking at ways to have more tools in the toolbox of getting money. And here, we're capping it, and so we're cutting off some possible flow of money that could be coming in because there's a violation. So it's another, you know, thinking about what could happen if we put liens on their houses and get paid back that way. And so that's just maybe a conversation at some time we need to have. And then you talked about vacant properties. And last time, I didn't ask on purpose because I just thought, I've been asking so many times. There's been a vacant house on 236 for 20 years, and I know people have talked about that. And there are Washington state laws that we can use, other cities are using. Are we looking at implementing that to do it? Or a drug house where we, other cities can go in? And I've seen them torn down within like a year, eight months, just based on the way they're using the laws.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll start with the first one. We're talking about caps. Because the fees can add up so quickly, like I said, there's been a lot of hesitation in applying them at all. So if, if somebody's looking at, well, if we're going to be fair and say that your deadline was this, and we're charging you this much per day, so if I'm going to charge you this, everyone has to be charged this, you're looking, somebody could potentially have blackberries overgrowing the sidewalk, which Public Works would have taken care of a long time before that. But as an example, and that could go $100,000. You know, it's, if you have a $10,000 cap on it, it's more likely to be applied.
Can you, and, and, and we've had these conversations before. I don't, I don't like hurting our residents for something. So I understand that, and I'm trying not to go there, but there have been some people that have been just horrific in different stuff. And usually, it's maybe a renter, you guys know more than I do, because you have to deal with it a lot more. Once you cap that fine, and it stops at $10,000, and it all gets cleared up, and then it comes back two years later, does the cap go away and you just start from zero again?
It's, it's per violation. So our caps are per violation. So one of the things that we have found is because we're more proactive on starting our process and running through our entire process, that, that fees aren't accumulating as quickly, and we're getting it resolved in a more, in a more timely manner. So we want to be equitable. We don't want anyone having fines of $100,000 for lawn grass. I don't think that's council's goals or ours. We're not using it as an income generator, but we are wanting to make sure that our cities maintain and, and, and meeting the minimum code criteria and to be as safe as possible. So that's why the fees are accustomed to the risk associated to what those violations are.
And I'm putting my John B. hat on, you know, and he comes in all the time. And you have people that don't want to enforce the rules, and you have people that really want to enforce the rules. So with, I'm, I'm assuming bringing this forward is going to help you do your jobs better? And it sounds like both of you had said it helps resolve the issue better with having a cap or just, oh, with the cap?
It does help with a cap because it allows us to go and have an early conversation of this is the fines, this is what it can accumulate at, and the quicker you resolve it, then the quicker. So the more that the violations are out of scope, and say $100,000 for lawn grass, the harder it is going to be for the city to maintain those fees.
And I'm sure we've never charged anybody $100,000 for...
We have not, no. But we want, we want to show consistency. So if we say $10,000 is the max, and we hold that line, then, then it's more equitable for everyone to go, we're actually saying the fees are maxed at this, and we're going to charge you those fees. Our, our goal is to make sure that what we say out there is fines is what citizens are actually paying for not following through. And if we don't max them out to say someone, you know, they're not just dealing with it, they know that the city's not going to charge them $100,000 for lawn grass.
So how long would it take somebody to get a $10,000 fine for having lawn grass? Because we have winters, right? And the grass all goes back down again.
Yeah. It's not typically grass. That's an overgeneralization, but...
Well, we've had John B. in here who talks about that just not too long ago, so that's what's in my head.
$10,000 would be a little over three months.
For, for, so we're talking about grass again, so...
Talking about grass. If you have one violation, it would take 100 days past their deadline.
So we were never enforcing the law before, is what I'm hearing? Because there would be no way to...
It'd be limited. So it would go from...
We'd have people screaming.
Right. So it would go from, you would get your, your written, but, you know, verbal, then written, and then you better do it, and then it'd either go to nothing or go to lawsuit. This is the middle ground.
Yeah, but I'm just saying it's just never, because years ago, sorry, and Kilkell brought it up too before, is we had so many people complaining that Mount Lake Terrace was just a dumping ground. And we got this really bad reputation, so we brought in where you could have garbage day, and everybody paid a little bit extra, and people would line up for garbage day. And that seemed to help a, a lot at the time. And then we talked about getting seniors' help and different stuff. But if our rules hadn't changed, we would have people on the book who would owe endless number amounts, and that's never happened. So what you guys are doing with Kristi's leadership is saying, okay, guys, we're going to put a, a line in the sand, and we're going to hold to our codes?
Yes.
But there still will be...
So when, when it was moved to CED, we created a code compliance policy and procedure manual that laid out how we are going to re-implement our code compliance. So thankfully, Laura has really been proactive, and we've been being responsive to citizens' complaints and walking through our process. So working with Hillary, making sure that our code is really lined up with our fees, and then following that code all the way through, we're getting compliance most of the time without even having fees. But because we are following our process all the way through on every case that we can, there are ones that get to the end, and there are fees owing. So I can't speak for prior to being in CED, but I can say that we are following our code as it is written, along with our policy and procedure implementation.
Thank you. There are some very elderly people, and I know I have to go take a nap after I mow the lawn. And do you have resources or churches or different places? What?
We're not elderly yet.
But I get tired mowing the, it's a lot of work. But when you see something like that, do you, do you have contacts to call to kind of help people with that? You know, we've talked about that in years past, having churches help or...
Sure, yeah, this has come up before. It's, first, I want to reassure you that it's, it's fairly infrequent that there's somebody who isn't able to cut their grass. We are putting together a list, we already have a list going, of groups out there who are willing to help with yard maintenance, for instance. As far as me going there and saying, you need to do this or that or the other, if somebody has a problem and they need time, all reasonable extensions are granted. Even some unreasonable extensions are granted. I don't need a good excuse. So if somebody says, well, like, we have a, a case right now where somebody has a hoarding issue, and she said, well, my garbage can can only hold so much, and my neighbors are helping, can I have some extra time just so that we can get everything out? Of course you can. Absolutely you can. And she showed progress every time, and it was just earlier this week that we closed her case out and...
And that's, and, and hoarder is a, a different issue.
Self-proclaimed, self-proclaimed. She told me that she was a hoarder.
But I'm just saying, good for her for making progress, because that is very hard for a lot of times for people to do that, so...
Yeah, I mean, the first time, the second time, and Matthew accompanied me the second time, there were rats running around. So it was a big change. And luckily, that one's done. But she knew the, she had resources. This is not the first time. She was able to do it. She just needed an extension. So if anyone tells me anything like that, I need an extension, no problem. Somebody says, I can't do it, then we'll look into options together. But it's never going to get to the point where somebody says, I physically can't do this, and the city says, well, you got to figure it out. Otherwise, it's a $10,000 fine. It's, that hasn't happened, and I don't anticipate that ever happening.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of some homeowner issues that I've been involved in and heard about. So it sounds like you're the right person for the job, so thank you for what you're doing.
Pardon? Oh, did he? Costumer Woodruff, did you have your hand up before?
I did, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And I didn't see who alerted you, so thank you, whoever was looking out for me. I actually just want to back up and just say Matthew did a wonderful job of what I wanted to say, which was, from my perspective, this seems like just another kudos for that move in, from the compliance officer to CED. You know, marveling here that we're 70 years old and we're just now defining what a yard is, or, you know, various other adjustments that have happened over time that you can look back and say, well, we didn't need to worry about an excavator in somebody's backyard. I mean, that's amazing. But, you know, I also want to just, again, reiterate, please do let us know how else we can support you. I feel like the last two weeks in particular, I've been saying, I think the most important thing we've been doing on council was cleaning up these codes. And so you bring in these set of codes our way, just yet another example of that. And more importantly, not to denigrate the police department, I'd, I'd like to think that the chief leaders, the leadership from Chief Caw about not, you know, giving people chances to educate themselves, not just be penalizing them, I think is part of that legacy. So this seems like a really nice transition with some of the legacy carrying over. So just a kudos to all of you. But again, let us know how we can help you continue doing this great job.
Thank you. Oh, Costumer Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. I thought I'd wait, because I have lots of questions, and I will name that I've spent a lot of my career working on policy. And so I'm always reading things with the perspective of like, what are the questions that are going to come up? What are people going to ask? Where are they not going to have clarity? And I will just name, I think, you know, code is the place, especially this kind of code, is the place that our community most often interacts with the city. So I think the more we can be clear and not ambiguous, and ensure that it doesn't feel arbitrary or unnecessary, I think is really, really important. So I appreciate all of the, the review and bringing things forward and looking for ways to improve our code. And I appreciate also the opportunity to have a conversation about it and ask all of my questions. So, so my first question was around yards. So I'm curious, so it talks about parallel lines. I guess I'm curious what that looks like then when a house isn't rectangular in terms of, you know, if the house is an L shape, and the front yard goes from the property line to the property, but the property is an L, and there's then a part of the yard that is not, you know, covered by that parallel line? I guess just help me, help, walk me through that so that I understand what that would look like.
You are asking the great question. So when it comes to zoning setbacks or building setbacks, they're straight lines across the property.
Okay.
And what happens is when we try to apply our, our code to when there's garbage or debris sitting in the front yard, the front yard is, by zoning, is a straight line. So if it's between that setback and anywhere in the house, no matter the shape of the house, it's technically not the front yard.
Okay.
So we can't say that there's debris in the front yard even though it's in the front of the house. So we're changing our code, so no matter where the house is oriented or the shape of the house, we clearly have designation on what's difference between the front yard, the side yards, and the backyard with that code language. So if you have a whole bunch of construction debris or a vehicle, I think in our current code, if a vehicle's parked on the grass right in front of their door, we'd have a building issue, but we would not have an, an ability to say that it's parked on the front yard.
Okay, let me follow up just to make sure I'm understanding. So like, let's say our little greenhouse there had a little, you know, on the left-hand side, it's stuck out a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
So the way I'm reading the proposed change, the front yard would be from the front of the property line to the front of that little sticking out part.
All the way to the primary structure, correct.
Right, but if the primary structure isn't a parallel line, then what about the part...
Then it's all, all encompassing from the primary structure to the front of the property. So all the way wherever the primary structure line is.
Okay, even though we are, we are calling it a parallel line? I think that's where it's confusing to me. So if it's a parallel line, it's a straight line, right? That, I, I don't know, I guess, and maybe, maybe in building speak, it makes sense. I will just say, I, I think of a parallel line as a straight line, and so if it stops at the property, then is there like this gap where, you know, there's yard that isn't covered by this, I guess, is my question.
Yeah, so it's the front property line drawn parallel to the front of the, the principal property.
I mean, that's a good point. We could remove the word "parallel." I, I just wonder if it's, if it's not adding value from your perspective, I, I think it may add potential confusion or confusion, or perhaps like an area that like, somebody could at least argue, like, that's not my front yard, based on our current code. So anyway, that was, that was one of my questions. And I will leave it to you guys to kind of determine whether or not that feels like it needs clarity. But it was a question for me as I was reading through.
We can, we can remove the word "parallel" for it and have it ready for you at the next... We can, we can remove the word parallel for it and have it ready for you at the next.
If that's awkward, we can adjust the language a little bit, fine tune it.
Awesome, awesome, thanks, guys. So one of the, so my next question was in the space that talks about unsafe conditions and that definition. And that makes, I think, you know, the first part talks about, you know, unsafe, unsanitary, deficient, you know, stuff that makes a lot of sense. And then there's a next sentence that I guess I'm curious to understand more what that means. It says, this includes illegal or improper occupancy and inadequate maintenance. Will you help me understand, like, I guess what we mean by illegal or improper? I guess really illegal makes sense. So I guess I'm curious what improper occupancy means and I guess I'm curious what inadequate maintenance means.
So improper occupancy referring to conditions that are not okay for a tenant? Or somebody living in a backyard somewhere? Or just anything along those lines? So if it's not safe or if we've, or if it's been deemed uninhabitable and people go in there anyway, then, which has happened.
Another instance which you enforced on not too long ago, living in a trailer where it looks like the trailer is about to fall in. That would be an improper occupancy because you're not allowed to occupy a trailer for that amount of time period. So then we could enforce and say that it's an unsafe condition because one, they're outside the code of how long they could stay in that trailer on the property. And two, the trailer doesn't meet minimum life safety criteria. And therefore it'd allow us to enforce as needed.
Is that covered by the rest? Then I guess I'm just curious, like, again, just in terms of like clarity, right? I mean, I guess, because we talk about life, health, safety stuff in that first sentence pretty clearly, at least from my perspective. And then we talk about illegal occupancy, which it sounds like it would be. So like, I guess improper feels like it could mean a lot of things, you know, because it's not defined as part of the code.
Right, this language actually comes from the IBC, so that might be part of it. But this definition is being used in reference to penalty caps only. It's not being used anywhere else.
Okay.
So there is a bit of subjectivity to it.
Okay, all right. And then I guess inadequate maintenance is the other area. Like, I mean, again, what is adequate maintenance and what is inadequate maintenance?
The nice thing is when we use code language from the International Code Council, then the more places that cites the same reference to code, the more leverage that code has and the more it's been tested. So this, this code definition has been tested several times. So that's why we're comfortable utilizing it because it gives us several tools in the toolbox to deem something unsafe conditions where we might not even think about it. So it's very hard for us to come up with language with all the might happens as opposed to taking a definition that's been utilized for a very long time in the National Code Council where they have fine instances where maybe the first part of the unsafe, unsanitary, have fire hazards or endangered human life and public welfare, didn't cover enough in a certain instance to then allow them to enforce. So we don't want to restrict our ability to be able to utilize the definition that we will use other areas of the code. So if I was to deem something unsafe, this is the definition I would use out of international building code. And having them unified helps us as a whole.
Okay, all right. I guess I just, I always worry about things being used in a way that isn't intended at this point. And I think we have great folks and I love hearing your story, Laura, about how you're handling, you know, particular code issues because I think it provides a lot of reassurance. And I often have questions about how these, you know, codes are being applied to our community and ensuring that they are being, you know, applied in a way that is equitable and necessary, but not overreaching or feeling like folks are being unfairly targeted. And so that feels like squishy language to me. And that's one of my favorite terms, squishy language. I don't love it, but I hear you and I will, like, I've said my piece there and I'm okay with it. Given kind of your explanation, Matthew, I appreciate it, you know. And I just think it's something for us to be aware of in the future that I would hate for that to be used in a way that none of us would do, but that could happen, right?
And again, this is basically for capping fees. But one of the instances where I found when I was doing my research on it is improper occupancy is you had people occupying commercial space that didn't have sanitary, things of that nature. So that's probably another reason why it's in there because, and then improper maintenance, that's what leads into the vacant properties that are not secured and unauthorized. So they kind, you're right, it's squishy, but the way that we apply them is that we want to have as many points of the unsafe conditions. We're not just going to say typically one because they all work together to make a better narrative of what we're trying to do. And life safety is our biggest concern.
Right, right, yeah, and fully support that and appreciate, yeah, the addition of that language. Talk about commercial vehicles. Can we define what a commercial vehicle is for folks? Just because I think we have lots of folks that have at least vehicles that have business-like signs on them.
No, no, no.
Like, is that, I was going to say, who's impacted by that change and who are we going to hear from?
So a commercial vehicle is a vehicle that's over 10,000 pounds and requires a commercial driver's license.
Love it, that's all I wanted to know there, thank you. And then the camping piece, because I know we're going to get a lot on, I didn't even know we couldn't camp in our yards.
Can you believe that?
I can't and I will own wholeheartedly that I've absolutely broken that rule, sorry. And I also though have had, I had a neighbor when I first moved into my house who was camping in their backyard and doing all sorts of things that they shouldn't be doing. They were, you know, they had folks living in tents. So like, you know, appreciate kind of trying to find the right balance, you know, for this. And again, I think it is an area where, you know, so for instance, I was like, how big is my tent? You know, like, one, I don't think that's things that people often know, right? And two, I will say mine is 112 square feet and there is me and my two children. So I, like, I think those are the sorts of things that sometimes feel arbitrary to folks. And it's like, are we really going to, you know, give somebody a citation if their tent is 150 square feet? And like, is there value in that? So I guess those are some of my questions around this particular piece. So I guess, yeah, I guess, let me give you all of them really quick, Laura, so you can.
Okay.
So I guess I'm curious why only single-family homes? I guess I'm curious about how we track the six months because that seems really hard. Like, it seems like calendar year or something like that would probably be much easier to track. I guess I'm curious why the specificity of number of tents and size. And then I just, I guess I will ask the question, I get why there's the restriction on visibility from public property. And I will also name that that probably means that some people are much more impacted by this than others, right? There are folks who don't have a fence around their backyard or who are at a lower elevation than perhaps their sidewalk or their neighbors across the street, right? And so I guess those are, those are the areas that I'd be curious to know the why and how, I guess, important we feel like the inclusion of those things is.
Sure, okay. Why single-family homes? Do you have any other suggestions?
I mean, I just, is it needed? I mean, if somebody has room and they meet all of the other requirements, we already require that, you know, they have to have, you know, permission from the lawful occupant of the home, that they have to have access to bathroom and cooking facilities and that they can't create a public health hazard or nuisance. Like, those things all make sense to me. But if they have a duplex or like whatever our future holds in terms of like the development of, you know, both current state and future state of our community. I mean, if somebody has room to camp in their backyard, I don't really care the type of home they live in, right?
Right.
Oh, sorry. So single-family rooms, duplex do count as single-family residence, so do townhomes. So single-family residence is actually much broader than just the standard picket fence, single-family dwelling unit. But if you're thinking apartments, things of that nature that you'd want it open to, then we could look at that.
Yeah, but then it comes down to apartment management and.
And HOA is like, I mean, most of those multifamily have their own rules for their own folks. So it kind of feels like perhaps maybe just an unnecessary inclusion that it might be simpler to just not include unless we think it somehow adds clarity that isn't, doesn't happen without it.
I mean, this is, this is something that would need to be road tested and then potentially changed in the future. It seems like there's a lot of restrictive language in it and that was done intentionally so that this couldn't be abused, so that somebody has people living in their backyard, which we, it's an ongoing thing at one house with, you know, drug activity where there's constantly someone moving in in the backyard. So that's the intent. The 140 square feet, I came up with that by looking up what is a large eight-person tent. So if you have a suggestion for a better size, I would love to hear it. The six-month thing, it's in there. I don't intend on keeping separate calendars for people with tents in their backyards. But if it's there, you know, it's bleached from the sun and it's been sitting there with leaves and snow on it. It's obvious this has been going on a little bit longer than two weeks. So then just having a number in there, and that is the same, the two weeks within a six-month period is the same as RVs. That's what we have for temporary occupancy of RVs. Number of tents and size, rather than having, you know, five tents out in the backyard with different people living in them and rotating through, then having one tent is just, just to prevent having something like an unpermitted encampment. If somebody is, here's the reality of it. If somebody has tents out in their backyard and I get a complaint, they're going to have more than two weeks to correct it. That's the truth. So if, say, there's a scout troop that all wants to hang out in the backyard, first, somebody has to tell me about it because I'm not going to see it. Then I'll, if I don't get voluntary corrections, they're still going to have so much time to take it down that this really isn't going to be like this really impacted thing. And then visibility by the public, it's for everyone's safety. People call the police when they see tents. They call the police when they see a tent. The tent in the front yard, that originally went to the police department and then came to me. And it was somebody who just wanted to beat the heat. Understandable. However, putting them in the backyard versus the front yard is a bit more appropriate. So, did that answer everything?
I think so, yeah, no, I appreciate it, thank you. And again, I appreciate there's lots of different directions we can go on all of these things and you're much closer to seeing the things that are going wrong. So I appreciate you trying to, I guess, take care of that. I will name though, I think, you know, one, when folks interact, when their first interaction or only interaction with the city is through code compliance, and that impacts how they interact with the city and how they view the city. And I will name, I've seen some of the reaction just the fact that we are talking about this. And folks have lots of feel, like, I'm like, I wish people were this engaged about some of the other decisions we're making. Because to your point, like, does it feel super impactful? No, are we probably going to get lots of calls about kids, you know, camping in their backyard? Probably not. But do I think that if we pass an ordinance that has really specific restrictions that people feel like are arbitrary or unnecessary? I think people want to follow the rules, but I think people also, when they don't feel like the rules make sense, are more likely to disregard them. And I think that sometimes extends past just the rule that doesn't make sense, right? And so I guess I just always want to be really careful when we're, when we're looking at something that it's necessary, right? And so like, it feels like all of this, like, from my perspective, I would remove the size of the tent. I'm not sure on the number of tents. I don't know that it, like, if you can't see it from the front yard, if they've got access to what they need and property, you know, permission from the property owner, I don't know that I care whether it's a single-family home and I don't know that I care how many tents or the size of those tents, especially if we're doing it with a maximum of two weeks.
Okay.
So that would be, I guess that's my input for you.
Yeah, so we also have a code in there that says that you cannot use tents for storage or parking vehicles. And if you don't have a size limit, you're talking a three-car tent that somebody's going to put in their backyard. But if they use it for two weeks, do we care? I mean, that's, I think that goes back to like, what is the value to the city in restricting the size of the tent? The only value is limiting it so that it doesn't turn into homeless encampment or an ongoing storage.
But if it's two weeks total, especially, I mean, I would say, I would say two weeks and 12 months because let's be real, nobody's camping in December for pleasure, like, right? So like, I'm not going to set up my kid's tent. Like, we have three months of nice weather if we're lucky. Like, I mean, it seems like if we had a limit on time and we enforced that, which totally does make sense to me, like, the other stuff isn't necessary. I think it's, it ultimately, like, if we didn't have a time limit, we may need some of those other tools. But it feels like if we're actually being, like, enforcing that time limit in a, you know, in the way that we're talking about now where we're like being more, you know, active in enforcing this code, like, that to me seems like it would take care of any of the, like, problematic issues that might pop up. So anyway, that's my two cents, I like, take it, leave it.
We can remove the size of the tent, as you're saying, as long as we're enforcing in the two, two weeks within any six-month period. We just might have to add some language if we're allowing multiple tents because then it's, well, this tent was up, now we got this tent. Now does that restart the clock? And then if I have six tents, can I do an entire year just moving from tent to tent? So we're trying to stay out of that silliness.
Yep.
Basically, we don't want to enforce someone enjoying the tent in their backyard. And we want to create equitability. If a family member does come over and let's say they have a tent rather than a trailer, they should be offered the same rights and abilities to be able to stay at their family's house without having a trailer. So that's why kind of the language matches.
Yep.
But we could get rid of some of the other language. I don't know about the front versus backyard. We could, again, we're trying to make sure that it's as safe as possible and reduce calls.
Understood.
So are you okay with the language?
I'm fine with that. I think, I think it makes sense. I will just name, like, there, you know, again, there will be people more impacted by that than others and I think we may hear about that, so.
Okay.
No, I appreciate, I think that makes a lot of sense. So thank you, appreciate you hearing my thoughts. I guess I'd be curious to know if and when caps are reached. So I mean, I think that's just something as a council member, I'd be curious if we, you know, start reaching caps for problematic in terms of the fees. If we start reaching caps, I guess I'd be curious to know when that happens or how many properties are reaching those caps, just so we can have some visibility into that.
Yeah, right, right now we already have fines that are over six figures that they're allowed to contest. And I'll let Laura speak into it.
Sure. They have a deadline and then they have a let's get serious deadline, which happens after their appeal with the hearing examiner is no longer available. And they can, once they get an assessment, they can appeal with Christie as the city manager's designee. And then, you know, of course, it could always escalate from there. But how quickly are people getting to these? Well, if it's a hundred dollars a day for one violation, $10,000 is a hundred days, $100,000, add one more zero to it. But usually, if you're getting to $100,000, there's multiple violations happening. And long before that ever happens, ideally, we're abating the situation. And this is so infrequent, so rare that we, there may be a dozen cases that are affected by this.
Yeah, that's, I guess I was just curious scope, but also if, you know, that limiting factor ultimately ends up not serving us as well as we hoped. So I mean, that would be my question and interest there. So, and other than that, just kudos. I mean, we learned in the recent, like, Ballenger Forum, Steve, I'm the rep this year. I enjoyed my first meeting, but all of the impact of like runoff from like particularly like construction materials and other things stored outside. And so it's not just, you know, how things look, but there is also a real environmental impact to that. And that was one of the things I learned about in our very first meeting. So anyway, I appreciate the work to reduce the amount of those materials that are hanging out in the community and causing impact in many ways, some seen and some unseen. So thank you for all of the work.
Thank you.
So in the past, we did have problems with tents longer than like permanent. So the two, is it two weeks or two months? Two weeks. You know, that I feel is just fine. The, I don't want to call them mobile homes, but the RVs. We have several in our neighborhood that they park it someplace else and they bring it in and then they leave it there for, because they're going to be leaving. And then there was one where they had a family come all the way across the country in their RV and then they stayed for quite a long time. It was more than two weeks, but, you know, that was family. And no one, I think, was ever going to turn them in because it was not a permanent thing. But it's just nice to know that these rules exist. I don't think we're going to have a fight on the RV thing that we had before ever again, I hope. ever again, I hope. So, I just think that, that the, the time limit part, because we also had a problem, you know, with, with that large tent, old tent, that was permanent. So, and I think that we've resolved a lot of other, other little things in, in our city, and you're doing a good job of getting the others resolved. And I'm not getting emails from a few people anymore.
Yes, thank you.
Were you copied in on those too? Oh, God.
They have my email.
So anyways, that's, that's just my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. All right. Thank you so much. Okay, so next on our agenda is the review of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee recommendations. Is this going to be with the two of you okay? So with our Recreation Parks Director Jeff Betts and our Events Coordinator Andrew Applewick.
Okay, well, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. As mentioned, I'm Jeff Betts, the Recreation Parks Director of the city. And tonight's agenda item, we're going to review the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee's recommendation for allocation of the 2025 Hotel Motel Tax Funds. So the city has allocated these tax funds for many, many years, and it's all based on one hotel located in the city limits. The Studio Six Hotel, which is located in the Gateway Neighborhood, collects these hotel motel taxes per state law. So the city budget, it was allocated $50,000 per year in the 25 and 26 budget. This was originally proposed by staff for this budget cycle because of the annual collection amount has been exceeding the amount allocated to organizations for quite a few years now. For the past half dozen years, the city has only allocated $25,000, which is less than half of what we're currently collecting. So this has built up a considerable ending fund balance. The current ending fund balance for the Hotel Motel Tax Fund is approximately $250,000. That's before this year's allocation. The increase in the amount being offered was also recommended by staff to align with council's goals, specifically goal number one, growing our vibrant community. Thought this would be a really good opportunity for new groups to apply for funding, for opportunities for different events within the community. And it did generate quite a bit of buzz. Based on that council-approved budget amount, only two applications were received, though, by the December 19 deadline. But as mentioned, it did generate a lot of questions, and I think Andrew here was engaged in quite a few different conversations. So I, I think along those lines for advertisement, quite a bit of the committee members have had input on further developing some of those interests in the community. And so I think we have a plan going forward to potentially walk people through that process so there is an opportunity for them to understand what goes into it. And it can be a little convoluted for people to understand the RCW and try to read to understand all the, the different ins and outs of that program. But trying to make a commitment to meet with them and bring some people along that understand that it's, it's not that complicated and kind of what, how you have to qualify for that and the process that would entail. So the 2025 Lodging Tax Advisor Committee was appointed by the council this past December and January, two different dates. And per state law, the committee is comprised of two representatives of businesses that are required to collect the Hotel Motel Tax, two people who are involved in activities that are authorized to be funded by this tax, and then also one elected official who serves as the chairperson of the committee. So the 2025 committee members are the council member Laura Sonmore, which is the chairperson and the city council representative. We had Travis Romine, which is the area general manager of Icon Hospitality. Is that correctly? Oh, wow, okay. David Cavassos, Chief Operating Officer from Icon Hospitality as well. Both of those represent Studio Six. And then Bonnie Mercer from Friends of the Arts and Dale Newman from the Now Schreiners. So what can lodging tax funds be used for? So really, tourism, and tourism marketing is the main point of it. But in summary, there's a tourism marketing, there's marketing and operations of special events and festivals, or operations of those tourism-related facilities owned or operated by nonprofit organizations. Also additionally, the other option is operations and capital expenditures of tourism-related facilities owned by municipalities or public facility districts. So the applicants, there were two, were Friends of the Arts for the Arts the Terrace Event. They requested $15,000, and they estimate about 2,700 in attendance for their event, and this is going to be the 45th year. Funds include advertising, utilized for advertising, printing for the artist preview party there. I know you've all been in attendance, but there are different elements to that special event that require rentals, such as a tent. They have musicians playing. So there's different elements to that, as well as some equipment investment. The panels that they actually got grants to purchase originally require some reinvestment as well. So occasionally panels and lighting and things like that need to be purchased. The other applicant was the Chamber of Commerce, and that was for the Mount Lake Terrace Dog Festival. There's actually a couple other names that are floating for it. I didn't write those down here, but they're appealing as well, so I'm not sure what they would settle for. But they did request $35,000 for this event, and this would require considerable startup funds for a new event, considering you have no equipment and really just starting out. So getting the word out is very important as well, some marketing. So they estimate about 8,000 people in attendance for this new event that would be held potentially at Evergreen Playfields. So they wanted to utilize that for some of the things I mentioned, marketing, community involvement, and some infrastructure, such as equipment rentals or, or some even some temporary infrastructure. So some of the criteria that needs to be utilized by state law that the committee has to base their recommendation on include whether the applicant submitted a complete application in a timely manner, and whether the proposed expenditure is a permitted use of lodging tax funds, whether the proposed expenditure has potential to increase overnight visits, including off-season visits and/or create a positive economic impact. They also have to demonstrate a need for funding by submitting a complete budget and financial statement information, including whether it demonstrates shortfall toward expenditures and if applicable, denial of other grant funding they've applied for. They also need to state whether the applicant applied for Snoamish County Lodging Tax or other county funds in general. So, in addition to this, state auditors have recommended that lodging tax funds be used for programs and events that reach an audience beyond Mount Lake Terrace. And that's really just to generate those overnight stays in the city, since the funds are generated by those overnight stays. The city's application and the state's reporting measures require an estimate of visitors traveling 50 miles or more to the event. So, the other recommendation, based on all of these factors, when LTAC met and reviewed those two different applicants, they made a recommendation that we're bringing to council tonight, and the committee believes that both of those applicants meet the criteria to generate overnight stays and to create an economic or other community benefit. So LTAC is recommending that Friends of the Arts be allocated $10,000 of the 15 they requested, and then the Chamber of Commerce be allocated $20,000 of the 35,000 they requested. So that total 10 and 20 would be $30,000, leaving 20,000 of the budget amount unspent. So, for council action, under state law, the city council has a couple options, but they're limited when it comes to LTAC. So they may award only the LTAC-recommended amounts to all, some, or none on that LTAC list. But you cannot adjust the funding amounts without resubmitting that request to LTAC. So if council desires to allocate funds for any entity not on the LTAC list or change those amounts, once again, they must submit that request to LTAC. So, and just wanted to put a note in here to some additional considerations. This year was a different year for events. As we all know, there was the end of a longtime Mount Lake Terrace event with Turd o' Terrace. And so, and it was something that none of us foresaw or knew about. And so Turd o' Terrace did not apply for lodging tax funds by that deadline date. And soon after that, they told everybody that they were retiring the event. But I think a, a couple of key nonprofits have stepped up and want to retain some elements of that existing event and start something new, with a new special event this summer. And so they've expressed an interest in utilizing lodging tax funds, but of course, that window was passed. So state law requires to allow a new application. The city would have to open a new advertisement window and have LTAC review any applications received, and then return to council for approval 45 days after advertisement. From the application close, right? Correct. So, based on that information, the staff recommendation in the report is still that staff recommends council move to vote on the Lodging Tax Advisor Committee's recommendation for lodging tax funding and authorize the city manager to execute those tourism promotion agreements with Friends of the Arts and Mount Lake Terrace Chair of Commerce for the aforementioned programs and events for 2025. This item isn't on this agenda, it's just review, so it would be for next Thursday's agenda, and you can place it on consent if you would like. But additionally, with that, city staff would also recommend that council allow the staff to reopen a new two-week application window for summer events, for anybody to apply during that two-week application window, and then allow LTAC to review if there are applicants, since there are extenuating circumstances. And we did vet this with legal, and this does line up with what the RCW allows.
Did you vet it with the committee? We have no idea about that at all.
No, we have not. I mean, that's why we're here at council, to see what council's recommendation is, what council wants to do, if they would like to do that or not, and send it back to LTAC. So there, there are a couple of options. You can either approve some, all, or none of those LTAC recommendations, and that's where I think you should start in discussion now.
Councilmember, I mean, Laura Sonmore and then Sonmore.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, so to clarify, we can put this on the consent agenda and ask, allow staff to put it, open up again, but they can be separate, they don't need to be, we don't need to combine it, we can go ahead and move forward with this recommendation.
Correct. That's our understanding.
As, as is presented. Okay, thank you.
Congresswoman Sonmore. Can you turn your?
We closed it, and that was not really fair to the committee, and Dale was there at the, the meeting, and we already got the shock that it went up to $50,000, and nobody was consulted on that. And now we've got this other new thing, and I do think funds can be used a little bit differently. There's a couple cities, one person who used to work here now sees it a little bit differently as well. But I can't get anybody to listen to me on certain things on that, and so that's why my frustration comes in a little bit. I have to say, switching gears, the committee was wonderful. We did do 20,000 to the dog show, and you have to remember, Turd o' Terrace usually only got about 15 for years and years and years. So this is a brand-new committee that's never put on a dog show, and $20,000 is a lot to give a group that we don't even know and doesn't have it established. So we took that risk, and we thought we'd do that, and we cut down on the arts, even though Bonnie was saying that they do need some new lighting and some new equipment. But, you know, it's well-established. I think, is it 50? I don't know how many years the art show's been going on. 45? I think so. And so you're saying that we approved that and now take some extra funds and give it to Mount Lake Terrace carers because they have a late application, when we kind of found out a little bit before that, that Turd o' Terrace, because Dale was telling me about some of the things that were going on, but he'd never mentioned anything about resubmitting anything. Did he know that at the time, or is this new? Because we've never done this before.
No.
They opened it because Virginia used to have to stamp them because people would get them in late, and if they came in late, you were out of luck.
It's, it's council's wishes if they would like to reopen a new window. It's perfectly allowable under state law, and many jurisdictions do this where they have multiple windows. It's not uncommon. I mean, most of the time, it, you know, common practice is to have one window, but this happens, from my understanding, speaking to legal, that this is, is something that happens from time to time. And this wouldn't be open for just one event. Anybody can apply during that two-week period. It's not slanted towards any, this is just to allow an, an event that we would like, from what I understand, that council would like to see be successful, and allow them to apply, and then LTAC can away the merits of their application or anybody else.
I know we've gone above the allotted amount, so the, the committee can come back and say, I want to see the fund balance, and I want to give them $75,000.
So the, the allocation that's available is $50,000.
But we've gone, but in the past, we've gone above that. The, we've made recommendations that, you know, Turd o' Terrace needed $5,000 extra. And so you're saying that there, there's a possibility of $20,000, and we can't go above that.
I mean, that is what's available in the, the fund for this year. What's actually budgeted is that up to $50,000. And, and council approved all of those numbers as part of the budget process.
Yeah, because we didn't know about it, because it was at 25, and it was just arbitrarily moved to 50,000, and that kind of threw us for a loop as well. I mean, that's where you have to take government and city council and communicate with one and another and get everybody involved in the process. Otherwise, you're just stepping on council, saying, you guys don't know anything, so we're just going to pull one over on you. So that's why I'd like to make sure, and at the end of the meeting, I'll make some recommendations after we do this. But, that's a side note, but what we did at that committee was, it was a good job. They did a really good job at that.
Did you want to? Councilmember Woodruff, did you have your hand up?
I did, it just times out. So thank you, good looking out there, Mayor Pro Tem again. You know, this comes up once a year, and I have the same question, but this time I'm going to ask it. Who controls this money? I appreciate this conversation, and maybe not being at the table, I can hear it a little differently, but at the end of the day, who controls this money? And I'm asking that for the follow-up question of, did you not start this conversation off with there's $250,000 sitting somewhere untouched because we don't move past whatever the 25 or the 50 arbitrarily, as we were just told? I don't think it was arbitrary at all. But nonetheless, these new numbers, but I want to go back to that 250. But again, it starts with who controls this money? Because if it's not the six of us sitting around that table, imagine I'm there, then who is in control of that money? Because otherwise, this seems like a mute conversation, and that might not be the right mute. So start with that one, and then I'll follow up with my actual question, based upon that question.
It's city council's wishes on what happens with that fund itself. Those, we budget them out, council approves that budget amount, but the ending fund balance is based on, as you mentioned, we have not been spending the amount of money we've been bringing in, so it's building up over time. And with, as mentioned, some of the ideas behind that we've had with event coordinator position and the desire to bring in more events and to build upon all the great things that have been happening here, that was the idea brought from staff, is let's see if there's more people who would like to bring great things to Mount Lake Terrace. The only idea behind that, but it is council's wishes on what happens, and council controls that fund.
Thank you. So, and on that, you actually just prefaced how I want to go with this next point. I, I have also sat on this council and heard the idea of a night market multiple times. If we always go, if we only had the money, I suppose, which to me seems like, with that money, would we not be able to seek out a nonprofit that does this and say, this is our investment, and we want to actually now solicit, not sit back and wait for people to find out about it, or you to hold an information session that you hope they're going to show up for, but for actively to look for these organizations and say, look, we have X dollars. Obviously, it's got to fit the RCW, so I think one of the pieces was it has to generate overnight. Obviously, it's got to fit the RCW, so I think one of the pieces was it has to generate overnight or something like that, so I don't know how you build that business case. Maybe it's just this idea that you can expect it at this time of year, maybe that's how it comes around, but it's putting that out there in the sense of, it seems, without knowing why, the 250 is sitting there. I'm not an LTAC member, maybe they could explain that to us a little bit better, but it seems like that 250 not being used while we're talking about economic development is a missed opportunity, especially when we've had great ideas expressed at this table, but always put our hands up with, how will we fund it?
Yeah, I think that there's a couple of reasons. We've, 25,000 is about what we used to collect, and so that's what we dispersed, around that amount. And so I think there were probably a couple of years, if I remember, where Tour de Terrace did not run, so they did not utilize that funding, so, I mean, there's a slight buildup from the pandemic where there were some extra funds, and then the collection amounts have increased too. Now we're collecting over 50,000. So that's only happened over the last few years where collection dollars have increased that much. So I think we just haven't adjusted the amount we're willing to try to give out to that amount as we had always done before. And so that's where the idea was generated, we're collecting 50, why don't we offer that, especially with the big funding balance? So the night markets are a fantastic event, and they're very, very expensive to run, just as when we ran our own farmer's markets, if everybody remembers that, that was 15 years ago, and they were very expensive without an experienced market manager. It's a position that is in high demand to have a good market manager, and our events here that we had for farmer's market was, the community loved it and turned out, but in the end, it didn't last very long because they're very difficult to sustain, as we know. I think something like that could go very well with a redeveloped town center, though. I think that we have a lot better possibilities to activate it that way. There's not very many night markets around here. I know there's a lot in Richmond and up in Vancouver I've been to, and down in Seattle area, I know that they took quite a bit of infusion from, there was an Amazon infusion a couple of years ago to try to keep theirs going, but it's hundreds of thousands of dollars to maintain, I think annually. I know Andrew knows a lot more about those and has done some research as well. So we'd be more than willing to try to look into that again, though, and other options that the council, ideas council has for that.
Yeah, and Steve, just for one second, so if we were going to utilize it, the city would still have to apply to utilize those funds, as we have to submit reports to JLRK for any event that utilizes lodging tax funds, so we would still have to bring it to the Lodging Tax Advisory Commission or Committee to approve the usage of those funds as well, because it has to still be submitted to JLRK for final report for what those funds have been used for.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, then.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you both, appreciate the presentation, and Councilmember Sonmore and the commission or the committee, appreciate the recommendation, supportive of the recommendation before us and supporting Friends of the Arts, and I'm interested and intrigued by the Chamber of Commerce's event, and so excited to see some new stuff happening, and would be very supportive, given we budgeted $50,000, and the proposed distribution is currently at 30,000 to reopen it and see what else folks might be interested in doing. I'm excited that we have one new event before us, and, you know, excited to continue to see how our event ecosystem grows in the coming years. So, yeah, that's where I stand. Thanks for the work.
Okay. We'll go to Councilmember Ryan and then Sonmore.
Thank you, Mayor. So we have to speak right now, Friends of the Arts proposed $10,000, Chamber of Commerce, Mount Lake Terrace Chamber of Commerce, 20,000, and we have 20,000 left. So, and that's in hopes possibly that some nonprofit could propose to put on a parade and maybe ask for 10,000, or put on a entertainment or something like Tour de Terrace, and 10,000, or whatever, and then that would go back to the committee, and then those 20,000 would be allocated accordingly. Okay. Sounds good to me, thanks.
Councilmember Sonmore.
I'll bring up two things. We were excited to see one of the applications, and there was, she had worked with markets, but she said that she had worked in Mount Lake Terrace, and they brought in over 100 diverse vendors, so when did we ever have 100 diverse vendors?
So there was an event, if you remember, that was held maybe two years ago, year and a half? Year and a half, that was out on the old Rogers Market site, and it was some, Making Local Markets was the name of it.
That's where you can go with your night market.
Right, and the light rail. So there was those two events. There was a Making Local Market at Rogers Market, and then there was the Light Rail opening. So this person that you're referring to is on one of our commissions too, and she managed both those events and has a ton of experience managing events?
And that's one of the reasons we decided to give that much money, and we really wanted to support the chamber, and we had a lot of dialogue with it, so everybody was good with that. Since Steve brought it up, that extra pool of reserves, can we get the last, like, 10 years of how that reserves and what funding, and if anything has come out on that? So that way, Steve would have the background of understanding how the reserves have been in there, and then how the city or the council can vote on to have a capital project with that, and so, you know, our budget is not going to be very well, and so we have to be very careful of how we spend money. But I do know, and I just want to bring it back around, I just don't like surprises at meetings, and so that was a surprise, and it just kind of threw me for a loop. I did talk to Dale quite a bit about, so Tour de Terrace sold all their chairs and tables and things like that, so I'm not really opposed to not helping because I understand that. I guess I'm more opposed to surprises, and so that's where it kind of threw me for a loop. But I do think that if we want to reopen it, that would be all for you to decide, but it would be open to other people as well, and I'd like to know how long it's open for?
We were talking about a two-week period.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I'm certainly very supportive of forwarding this recommendation and put it on the consent agenda. I assume that's, it sounds like everybody's supportive of the recommendation as presented to us, and I'd also be supportive of opening it back up and allowing anybody, I guess, any opportunities to be able to apply, and bringing that back to LTAC for reconsideration, consideration of using the additional funds available. And I would also like to encourage us to set aside some time to have a full, a bigger discussion about LTAC and kind of strategizing about how we might be able to use those dollars. I think, you know, has been pointed out, we've got, we've got a lot of things to consider, additional fund balance that has been growing, but at the same time, potential challenges for how that may or may not be used, some additional ways we might want to consider using it to be able to create additional opportunities. So I think it's just worth having kind of a three-step process here, getting this, first of all, approved, second of all, opening it back up for additional opportunities, and third of all, just having a strategy discussion session, maybe at our retreat, as part of our retreat, or as a work session. I think it's worthwhile to have that additional discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I love that idea to revisit this in the amount, and I'd love to introduce, and going to introduce, that we try to time something around, I'm not a soccer, excuse me, a football fan, the World Cup, is that what's coming here? I'm sorry, I shouldn't know this, FIFA, I don't know. I just have been hearing a lot about this, and it seems like with us being on this light rail, we can literally have the world checking this out, which gives us plenty of time to figure out how that could look, but just kind of putting that in motion of, if we have this conversation, we actually have a potential opportunity in time that doesn't happen everywhere, that we should try our damnedest to take advantage of.
Okay, Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I'm going to be the last one to speak, I don't know, but if we move this to our next meeting on consent calendar, we're probably going to have to make this a separate item, not on consent calendar, because I'm a liaison with the Arts Commission, and I'm one of those voluntold people. Thank you.
I don't see any other hands going up. So we've got a lot of work. So what we're going to do is, this part of it is going to be on the consent calendar, and then we're going to...
Yeah, just do it in regular calendar, so we can... It'll be its own agenda item. We'll adjust, yep.
Okay. All right. I think that is it for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the review, review agreement with Creighton On-Call Engineering for Material Testing, and, oh, you had to stay here the whole time.
Oh, this is great stuff. I love it. So thank you again, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council. This first item here is for a on-call agreement for materials testing, for $100,000 for the bionium, and again, this is something, a service that supports most if not all of our capital projects to ensure that, you know, work that has been done on the projects meets our specifications. Some large cities, like Seattle, which I have worked before, has their own group because of, there's always work to be done in this area, this is why we're doing it on-call, because we don't have, you know, the facilities or that consistent of work to do this. So it's as needed. So the request here is, I put this on consent to authorize the approval for this contract.
Any questions? Councilmember Sonmore.
So this is budgeted for 2025?
2025 and 2026, the bionium, yes.
And what exactly do we get for that?
Right, it's a great, great question. So materials testing, just to give you a few examples here, so again, this is, if we visualize that the work is completed by a contractor in the field, and a lot of work has to be done to meet a specification that we call out in the contract, and we need somebody to, we, you know, it's not that maybe we don't trust, but we need to have a third party go and validate what the work has been done, so it meets. Some examples here is crushed aggregates, so have you compacted it enough, the strength of the concrete, compaction of a backfill, road pavement. If we don't test it, right, you can't see that, it might not perform, right? But if you do the testing, you can say, oh, boy, you didn't compact this to, let's use the number, 90%. It's 60. If we didn't do that testing, you know, what's going to happen? The road will collapse, you know, much sooner than it should. So this is why it's, testing is really a performance, making sure the performance was adequate.
So we have to do this? We do, can we opt not to do this?
Oh, certainly, we could, we could opt not to, but then we would be, you know, it would be a risk for the project, right? So this is something we...
So we might have to redo that project if we didn't get it tested and there was something wrong?
Great point. If they don't, if, right, if the spec's not met, that's a great, great point. If the specification's not met by the results of this third-party test, right, then we can go back to the contractor and say, you need to redo this. That was unfortunately what happened to Sound Transit with their rails across Lake Washington. They didn't meet performance testing with the materials testing.
Is that the pillars down by South Center?
No, this is actually the tracks across Lake Washington. They had to pull, that is why, you know, materials testing is why that was, been delayed because it was not safe, right? It was not done to specifications. So this is really a way to reduce the risk of performance that sometimes you can't visually check, that you need to check.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
So we can go on to the next one, no more, I don't see any more questions.
Consent agenda, yes. Second one here is another, oh, did you need to do a preamble for this?
Well, review of the agreement with Fair and Peers for traffic impact fees.
Thank you, I got ahead of myself there. Yes, correct. So this is a little different than before, it's not an on-call contract, this is a, to conduct a study to reassess our transportation impact fee, every, all cities have these, and the work started with the work that Christie and others did on the comp plan, so we're using that as a base. So what happens here, there's going to be a lot of community engagement, so at the beginning and during the process, and that includes coming, I think, to you a couple times, and reaching out to our constituents. What, some of the highlights of the work will be updating our project list of what projects actually meet the needs and meet the requirements for being part of transportation impact fee, looking at our, updating our travel demand forecast, updating our growth estimates, a lot, again, that has been started with the comp plan, estimating the trips associated with growth, that's a key factor of this, how many trips really are we going to be generated with growth, coming up with the impact fee, doing some code review, and then ultimately bringing back a proposal to all of you with all the information, again, that we've described, and a proposal for impact fee. That will include how we compare to others. Just before, you know, early afternoon, I took a look, and there's this great graph that I found that has 74 cities and five counties in Western Washington and all their impact fees, and it goes from $907 to, for Oak Harbor, and $15,000 for North Bend. We're right in the middle. So we'll, as part of this work, we're going to be bringing back relative comparisons to where we land, if the changes are, if there's any significant changes, but it'll all be based in this data analysis. And this is, again, a request to conduct the work, so it's beyond consent.
Any questions?
Just again, since I'm budget content, this is 2025, 26 budget?
Yes, yes, and it's in the budget, yes.
Mayor Protemwall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to, I support having it on the consent agenda, just a technical note, you'll notice there's three pages to this council report.
Yes.
That the last page is from a previous cut and paste, and just need to update the staff recommendation.
Oh. Oh, that was, was there something in there for stormwater?
Right.
Okay, I thought that, I printed this out today, and I thought that was, I got an extra page in the printer.
Well, it ended up in the, in the report.
Okay.
At any rate, I think it just needs to be cleaned up a little bit, so before it gets into the consent agenda that we're approving, just wanted to make sure it gets cleaned up.
Exactly, and the staff report should be just two pages, and you're right, there's a third. My mistake in that, I did catch that, but I thought that was, I thought it was my error, printing it out. Thank you for catching that.
Okay. I don't see any more questions.
All right, thank you very much for your indulgence of means today. Thank you.
Thank you for sticking around. Next is the review agreement with Baker Tilly for long-range sustainability planning, whether, is this going to be Jeff Knighton, or, okay, with Carolyn Hope.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, city council members. I'm here tonight to talk to you about a professional services agreement with Baker Tilly, a consulting firm who's been selected to perform the long-range financial sustainability task force and plan for us, and just as you recall, we came to you last May and June to talk about this idea, to review the scope of work that the consultant would perform and share that with you. So we sent out a request for proposals for this work, which is basically to help us understand our finances moving forward, have another set of eyes, look at our long-range forecast, to develop some ideas about how we can close a future gap between revenues and expenditures, and to share ideas with a task force to give us some recommendations, and that task force would then give us some recommendations to the city council to review and consider. So we sent a request for proposals out that outlined the scope of work for the consultant. We had seven proposals, which was pretty robust for this type of work, and through that competitive process, we selected Baker Tilly. They are a They are a well-known firm for conducting financial models, for understanding general municipal accounting, and they have a really strong team proposed to support this work. So, we are seeking at our next council meeting, council's approval of the contract for $99,500, which is within our budget.
Councilmember Sonmore?
Okay, this is where I'm putting on my serious council hat. I'll ask a few questions and then I'll stop, or raise your hand if you wanna ask some questions, because I have a whole bunch here, and I'm trying to do it in sequel here. So, I understand the outcome of this project is six items. Project revenue and expenses, the city already does that. At least three potential reductions in expenditures, which we should already be looking at, and three potential revenue increases, okay? That one's a good one. Impact of proposal, so we should be doing that. And then a description of public and city council process and a final recommendation. And why I'm bringing this up is, I'll start with a quote first and then we'll go from there. I like this quote, and let me see if I can find it here, since I write a lot, or I'll just remember it off my top of my head, but I don't need someone to come and take my watch and tell me what time it is for $100,000. And I'll, I'll give you all the reasoning behind it, and this firm has worked with Kenmore and Samaish, and so they're outside of Washington State, and Washington State budget is a little bit different than other states. And I know Kenmore did work with a committee this year, I was reading on their website, but I don't think they employed anybody. It looked like it was from 2020 when they had hired this company. I can't tell for sure, but I can pull it up on my iPad. So, why do we need to bring in a consultant to tell us we have a problem with our finance? We already know our finances are bad, and I, I hope everybody understands the dire straits that we're in with our budget, and I really hope the finance starts meeting. The committee is meeting monthly and giving us monthly reports on how we have gone above our budget or what we're adding to our budget that wasn't projected in our budget, because I know we've already got a couple things on there. And we have staff to work through this. We have a financial committee, and we can have, put people from our community on a board. I'm not saying I don't want the community involved, but I'm thinking for $100,000, can you imagine the headlines? Council approves in a small city $100,000 for looking at your budget? And how long is this good for? Is it only good for two years? So, we're paying $50,000 for a plan that may not go out, that we should already be doing? And then it was also mentioned that some of the issues were, we've only used 1% of our levy that we can go out for, and that's not true. I don't know if it was just a general statement. And then it also talked about bank capacity. I don't know why the two were mixed together, but bank capacity usually is, if you go above your 1%, you have to go out for a levy lid lift and ask your public, so I'm not sure. We do know in today's forum that budgets aren't getting any better. In fact, they're probably worse than when we put this out for bid. We are gonna have to go back to each department. This is what we did during the recession. We go back to each department head and we ask them, what can you cut? You've gotta go down to bare bones, because we can project out our budget is going to go down and it's not going up. We're spending more than what we're taking in. And so, I just wanna make sure that the City Council doesn't take the easy way out. We, we actually get into the nitty-gritty and we understand the budget. I know Steve's been talking about that, and that's why he wanted on the finance committee, but we're spending $100,000 to have somebody tell us that we have a bad budget, and then we're going to be bringing in residents. I'm all for bringing in residents, telling us what we can do with our budget, but we all need to understand what each budget can be spent on and what it can't be, just like Steve just asked about the hotel motel. That can only be used for certain items, right? And so, we can't be looking at that pool of money only for a couple different things, and our capital budgets and, and different things are that way. It's just not like, I was talking to somebody in Park and Rec and they wanted to know about our budget, and a lot of people think we have one budget and that's what we do, but I do realize that everybody sees the budget different. And this is where I'll come in, everybody has their own opinion of their budget and how we wanna spend things, and I get that. That's the way the world works, and that's the way we work at home, but we have staff here and we're having all sorts of activities and fairs and different things that we're managing. Why can't we manage a finance committee with citizens on it that's a permanent thing instead, instead of spending $100,000? I can tell you, I could call in a couple people that would do it for a lot less. And I'm just thinking, in today's world, we go out and spend $100,000 on a consultant. That, that's why I was asking him, do we have to do this? This is something that we don't have to do. What do you think that we've done in years past? You know, and that's why we have our financial policies, and if we don't keep those financial policies in place, it's gonna be worse. And so, I'm just putting that out to you, is, do you wanna spend $100,000 for something that we should already be doing? And so, I'd like to understand, do we not have staff that understand the budget and why are we going out?
Thank you, Councilmember, for your comments and questions. This has been a project that we've talked about for about a year now, and it's really been about making sure the community has a say in where we pull the levers, right? So, where are we gonna cut services and how does that impact the community? If we're gonna raise revenues, is that somewhere where the community is going to be supportive? It's always helpful when we have not only staff in the council talking to the community, but experts in the field who have perspectives from other areas in the state. This firm does work in this state. Steve Toller is local. He works in Washington. He was the project manager of the two projects you mentioned, and we've worked with, I personally worked with him in another city. Baker Tilly's been working with the city on some accounting work. They've been doing an excellent job for us and supporting us in Washington-related budget matters. Really, this project is about bringing the community along in a complicated process, and so managing community work is a lot, it takes a lot of resources. And so, it's not that we're not capable. It's about providing additional expertise and different perspectives to the table in a struggle that a lot of cities are dealing with right now. This is a long-range plan and it will take us out at least six years.
Go ahead.
We have a six-year forecasted budget, and we already know we're going in the red. In fact, we're gonna go bankrupt if we don't do something, and I'm telling you that specifically because I want you to know how serious this is. Edmonds went out and they had a committee, and in the paper it said, the committee recommended this, like they were blaming the committee for something. I don't want that. I want the citizens involved in it. We have all these events. We're doing DEI events in here, and we're able to get people to come in and, and talk. Why can't we do that for finance? Why can't we have people? And I know it's complicated, but you're not gonna tell the citizens in, what is it? I don't know how many meetings, but it's really what comes in and what goes out, you know? But you have different pools of money that we have to manage anyhow. So, do you think in six years, we're gonna spend another $100,000 to tell, somebody tell us how to spend our money? It's just the, the, in the report I read, they, they were only in two cities, Kenmore and Samaish, and I think at the time, they didn't have the financial person at that time to do the budgets that they needed to, because why wouldn't everybody go out for that? I mean, why, why wouldn't Edmonds go out for that and stop being in the hole for $8 million or Mako Kio? Everybody's in the hole right now and we all know that, and so why do we want somebody else to tell us we're in the hole when we have to figure out the depart, we're gonna have to go back to the department directors anyhow. When it's all said and done, we'll get this Knighton neat report, right? And they're gonna say, okay, department director, we did this before. Christie, how many people can you cut? Your budget's gonna have to be this amount, and you have this coming in. It's not all gonna be with impact fees. We cannot balance our budget with impact fees. Everybody thinks, oh, yeah, we're gonna get tons of money, and it's not gonna get any better. And so, why aren't we looking at it right now and asking our departments, how are you gonna cut? How are you gonna save money? All these events we're gonna do, they're all gonna go away. That's what happened in 2008 when we had the budget crisis. We had to end up laying off people. I'm trying to prevent layoffs, and I'm trying to prevent not having people come in and say stuff, but we have all these events all the time that we put on. We've had Budget 101 meetings. We, there's all different sorts of ways you can look at this finance. I mean, we've had it over the years, and I'm just surprised that we're gonna spend $100,000 when our budget is already bad. So, I hope you take that with a grain of salt and really think about how you wanna spend your money, and if we were to save that $100,000, would that save somebody's job for one more year? You know, we have a new finance director. We just promoted somebody to an accountant, so why can't we do this? Because it's gonna have to be done in the future. We can't always rely on a consultant to help us with our budget. And they're outside of the city and they're outside of the state, and so, I, I, I mean, we have finance people in the state that would do a great job, and can I ask, the seven other people that applied, what were they charging? And I, whether it was a negotiation with this one?
Most of the proposals were very similar in the $100,000 range, and...
And we can see those proposals?
Yes, you can see those proposals.
Because I'd like to see who else applied.
Sure.
Because I know we, we keep on going to Kenmore all the time, and I just would like to be able to understand what we're doing with the city when we have able people here to do it.
Sure.
Yeah, 'cause you're the finance person.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let me start by completely agreeing with Councilmember Sonmore's assessment that we have a serious financial crisis coming to this city in a few years. But it's because of that that I support moving forward with a process to ensure that we address it head-on, and I believe that this process will be effective. I, I appreciate Councilmember Sonmore's concern about spending $100,000. Nobody wants to spend... Yeah. Yeah. And, and I, so I absolutely appreciate Councilmember Sonmore's concern about spending money to save money. I, I love that quote, by the way. That was, that was a great quote. But I think we are in such a dire position that we need expertise. We need help. We need to find a way, and I, let's step back a minute and, and look at all the other areas, the comprehensive plan update, the economic development strategy, the town center update, the civic, you know, civic campus process, you know, all of these things, we've brought in consultants to be able to help us guide through a process that finds the right solutions, and it's part of engaging the public. I need, I want this expertise to help us identify efficiencies. Where and how can we use artificial intelligence, for instance, to be able to help reduce the, you know, repetitive tasks and allow our staff to be able to use our staff more creatively and, and in, in other ways? What other ways are there for us to be able to look at how we can do, do more with our money in better ways? Are there areas that we don't need to be spending money? Are there areas that we wanna refocus, reprioritize? And that's what, we need, we need the public engage in that process. We need expertise and we need our staff at, in all of our departments to be able to give us ideas of where would you make cuts? And, and it's a, I think it's gonna be a very long, difficult, challenging process, but we've gotta get there, because Councilmember Sonmore's right. If we don't address this head-on, we are gonna be facing the same kind of problems that Edmonds is facing right now in four years. And we can't afford to be in that position, because they're, they still haven't figured it out. They're still juggling and putting, you know, trying to find solutions to be able to just keep their city going, and we can't afford to let that happen here. We've gotta make sure that we are getting on top of that now, and this is, I believe, I, I, I very much like this process to help us address this head-on.
Okay, I'll, I'll address it then. So, here, here's, oh, yeah, yeah.
Go ahead, Councilmember Murray.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor. I, I guess I'd love to give my thoughts and, and, you know, hear from other folks again, but I appreciate the conversation and, and I appreciate the thorough thought process. And again, it is something we've talked about a couple of times, and I had some concerns and questions early on, similar to some of the questions that you brought up, Councilmember Sonmore. And I will say, at least for me, I feel like those questions and concerns were addressed through the previous conversations, and they really come back to, I think, some of the things that, that Mayor Protem Wall taught, talked about in terms of, well, one, I will start with my HR hat. Like, we have a very lean city staff, so when we engage in big projects that are above and beyond the normal day-to-day of running our city, I think we have to recognize that putting that on staff's laps, who already have very full jobs in and of themselves, is not a fair ask, and it is not an ask that ultimately gets us to good solutions if we really want thoughtful time put into these projects. I will say that from a just capacity perspective, it's the reason we use consultants so often, in addition to the fact that they often bring in expertise that we don't need on a full-time basis and don't have in-house. We also just don't have extra capacity hanging out, and so I, I wanna, I guess I wanna name that piece, and that is a big reason why I, I do support us using consultants, because they are often more effective and more cost-effective ways for us to do work than it is to hire staff's capacity above and beyond what we already have, that we don't need on an ongoing basis. But also, they bring in perspectives and expertise that, that we don't necessarily have, and I know the value of having a third party take a look at the work you're doing and see it through fresh eyes, and I think that there is a lot of value in that. But really, the community engagement piece is the piece that, that for me is the most important part of this, and I, it's a big part of the work that they're going to be doing and engaging in. And, you know, I, I will say, as somebody who was not on this council during the last recession, I wish somebody had talked to me more about some of the decisions that were being made. I think we hear a lot of frustration from our community about, you know, the, the large increases in rates, you know, oftentimes which were deferred, because at the time that felt like the right decision. And maybe, you know, I don't know what our community is going to say. I think that, that's where, like, when, you know, we're talking about the rec pavilion and, and how to move forward with that, I don't know where our community is at in terms of, there's lots of different ways to solve this, and one, it's not just cutting. I think oftentimes we cut things that ultimately cost us more in the long run, and I think we need to be very, like, aware of that as we are looking towards our goals and vision for the city. I think one of the reasons we have progressed more slowly, I think is the kind way I will put it, the reason we have progressed more slowly as a city than, I think, a lot of our residents wanna see us progress and are very frustrated that we have not progressed, is because we haven't invested in ourselves, and, and I think that's an important conversation with them. I think there are plenty of our residents who don't wanna see us make significant cuts and to, to staff and to programs that ultimately are benefiting them, enriching their lives, and driving us towards where we wanna be as a city, and I think we need to have those conversations in a holistic way where they can understand the full picture. And I think the Edmonds School District did a, a really great exercise as they've navigated budget challenges in recent years, you know, engaging with residents around, here are the costs of various things, like where are your priorities? What's important to you? And that gave their, their, you know, their director, Board of Directors, a lot of information to then make better informed decisions with as they're making hard decisions. And I, I don't, I don't pretend to not know that, that we are going to have probably some hard decisions to make, you know, but I think those decisions will be much better informed by going through this process and ensuring that our community understands the full scope of, of what we do, the costs involved, the ways that we can look at, you know, both costs and revenue, and then us ultimately, as a council, you know, taking a look at all of those different inputs to make the, the decision that we believe is best for our community. So, supportive of this, but appreciate the conversation, and again, it was definitely an area where I had some questions and concerns, and appreciate, you know, being able to get to a place where I, I feel good about making this investment in ourselves to get to a better end solution.
I move to extend the time past 10, because I still think there's a lot more dialogue, but I wanna follow up. So, Erin? So, Erin, um, shall we vote?
Okay. Well, I didn't know if you guys were going to do it. Okay. Yeah, we move to extend. Otherwise, we'll have to move this to another work session meeting.
Do we just do it past 10 or did we always say?
We have to send a time.
Uh, Mayor Protem Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to extend the meeting until 10:30.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 So, I just want to go back. So, this committee is only going to maybe have eight people altogether, so you're talking five people from the community on this committee. And then, we're going to have a plan to send it out to everybody. So, it's going to probably go in the newsletter and so, we're really affecting maybe, I think, six people if we're going to have six people from the community on this committee. And so, how is that telling everybody what we're doing with their budget? And we understand the basics of our budget, right? So, we're, um, well, we're, I want to say a full city service, but fires out. So, our roads, we have to pay for. We have to look at water. We have to look at police. And if we, you look at our financial policies, there's like, phew. And activities are way over here as a city. We don't, everybody keeps on saying we have to do activities. That's a bonus. That's a bonus to our citizens. How would you like to tell somebody, well, um, we're going to cut a police person because we want to have an extra activity in the city and I'm a senior citizen and I live in a bad part of town and you're going to cut a police officer because you want an activity? There are going to be very, we're going to have to do a building blocks of the budget. It's just like you do your home. You have to pay for your water, your sewer, and then you can think about food and getting a new car and gas, but you have to have the foundation of paying for your house or your rent. And so, having the community involved, 100%, but we could do that in-house too. And if we don't have the expertise to do their jobs here, that's their job, is to look at the budget. And they should not come forward and ask us to spend $100,000 on something that we don't have the money for. We do not, I know it's, they say it's in the budget, but here's an example, okay? We have a retreat. We build this beautiful city hall and we said we would have all our events in the city hall because we worked so dang hard to get the city hall. We're having our retreat in another city. And why are we paying to go to another city and how much is our retreat costing us last year and this year? And so, we worked so hard to get the city hall, so we should hold our retreat in city hall, right? Because we built, it took so long to get the city hall and we have this beautiful city hall, so you want citizens involved. Who's going to drive over to Kirkland to be involved in our retreat from our city when if we had it here, it would be better for our citizens to come here and enjoy us for, join us for the retreat? And so, we know our budget's bad. Why are we spending extra money on a retreat for, for us? And we all know it's nice to be on council, but we, we're not in it to have big food or go to another event. We've got this beautiful city hall and, but we're going to another city and most of our citizens, they didn't attend last year, but maybe if we had it here, they would attend. And so, it's like having your budget at home. If I know I'm tight on my budget, I'm not going to spend extra money on things that I can't afford. And that's where I'm kind of going with it. I understand your logic, but I see it from another way because we have all these events and you think sometimes we hold something and only five people show up, you know? And we're thinking, oh, we did that. But if we have a committee with only eight people on it and we're supposed to send that information out to everybody, we're going to do a newsletter or we're going to put it on Facebook, you know? And if we put this on Facebook that we're spending $100,000 on a consultant to tell us how to do our budget, can you imagine the feedback that we're going to get on that? It's like, why aren't you guys doing your own budget? That's what you're paid for and each department director is responsible for their budget. So, that's why I, I'm, I'm kind of lost on the logic that you guys are telling me. I understand your point of view, but I'm, I'm trying to understand, do you guys understand the budget enough? Do we need to educate us more? Because it's hard understanding the budget for us. But, so, do you guys know how, how long we're going to last with our budget? We went over this in detail. You, you do know our budget?
We literally already approved it. Do you understand?
No, no, I'm not saying that. I mean, no, I meant when we're going in the red is what I'm questioning. Is that you're going to have to cut services for our citizens, no matter if we have this committee or not.
Mayor Protem Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, 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 I think, I hope Councilmember Sonmore knows how much I appreciate where she's coming from and, and we're, and, and I know, I know, I guess, I, 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 but I do want, I do appreciate your concern for the budget. Heartfelt concern for the budget because I, I share that concern. Um, it's, I guess, how we get there. And I think part of, you know, what we're approving is not just handing over a check for a consultant to come run some meetings. I mean, this is, there's a part, I envision a, a public engagement process like we did with the comp plan, like we did with the town center, where we're doing open houses and we're doing these budget forums and, and allowing people to come in and put the building blocks and help, help us build a budget. Um, and, and, and that's part of what that $100,000 is paying for is a community engagement process and going, and bringing the public in and putting on these, uh, sessions and opportunities for the public to give us the feedback for how, I mean, I'd love to be able to just say, okay, let's cut out, you know, $2 million from our budget or whatever it is that gets us to where we need to be in a couple of years. But I, I, we all have our own different priorities, but I don't know that any of us have a good idea of, I mean, we have our feelings of where we think the community may be coming from, but like you point out, I mean, it's, it's not just eight people we're going to hear from. I want to hear from the masses on what, what are, what are, what programs are your priorities? Um, I fully support doing our retreat here in the future and that's a good, that's a great point to make and that should be on the table and, and a recommendation that could be made as far as making future, future, putting together future budgets. And there's a lot of other areas that could be considered wasteful or, uh, additional or nice to haves versus need to do's, right? And I think that's part of the process that we need to engage in. I think that we may very well be looking at the possibility of having to increase revenues. And if we are, what revenues is the public willing to increase if they are? Are we looking at, you know, we talk about the, the 1% property tax and potentially being able to go above that. We talked about the bank capacity. We talked about, we, we have a lot of other, you know, special purpose districts. We have the possibility of the Metropolitan Parks District for helping us to address Rec, the Rec Pavilion, which is another part of the budget that we need to, another need that we need to address. We've got the, uh, you know, other, other potential, uh, ways to fund different programs, I guess. That, that needs to be considered and talked about, whether, whether we even are willing to go there and our, our community would support that. Uh, I don't know. I mean, I, my sense is that they're not. But, um, and if, and if, and, and regardless, it's going to cause a lot of pushback from at least, I, I think that's a, that's a, an issue that is going to be a challenge. We may have the majority of support, but it's not going to be a solid majority. It's not going to be a super majority. It's going to be a touch and go issue. And we can't, I, I don't, I think we've got to be careful about relying on the community supporting a tax increase to be able to fund future budgets. So, I think that's a, absolutely a concern we've got to address and we've got to address it publicly. We need to make sure that we get community engaged and discussing that before we start writing future budgets on our own. So, I want to hear from the, from the people about where to cut if we need to cut. Uh, we, we need to do something, right? I mean, we've got a budget problem and we are either going to have to increase revenues or cut programs or some combination there between. And that's a discussion we need to have with the public and I want to hear from everybody in our community that wants to be heard about what we're going to do and how we are going to do it. And that is a huge part of where I think this city, this community needs to be, what we need to be talking about before our next two-year budget. We need to solve this problem in the next, before the next, we adopt the next budget. We need to have solid recommendations of what we're going to do and how we're going to fund ongoing operations in the city.
We'll, we'll do one and two.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I will just name, I, I think it's really important that we as council members respect one another's perspectives. Um, I would never question whether or not another council member's perspective was born of lack of understanding or information and I think it is incredibly important that we understand that we do have different perspectives and I actually think that goes back to why this is so important. I think it is, you know, fascinating to, to go to the, the idea that cutting programs, you know, i- is everyone's first perspective or that folks don't want new revenue. I will name that everybody on this council is older than the average age of a resident in Mount Lake Terrace and I will tell you at some...
That's ageism. You can't, that's kind of mean to say you're in HR though.
No, no, that is...
You're calling me old.
No, I, I am saying that...
That hurt my feelings. That was kind of mean. I'm sorry.
Okay, I would love to not...
That we're all old here and I'm telling what to do. So, that, I mean, that one was a low blow.
That's not a, that is a fact. The average age in Mount Lake Terrace is 37 and some change.
And, and good.
And I understood that part, so I didn't feel offended at all.
Right. We are all older than that, including myself. But so what that means is we all have our experiences within our community in terms of how we experience the community, how our circle of, of friends and family experience the community. And it means there are limits to how we understand and perceive what the community wants. And it is one of the reasons that this is incredibly important work because I will tell you that recreation programs is a big part of what people moving to our community and what younger folks, particularly those with children, want in our community. And so, like, again, we don't have to agree on that. That's okay. But I think it's why it's really important we hear from our community because we don't, like, none of us represent or know all of the things and I think we're doing a great job of community engagement. We had, I mean, it said 65 to 70 in the report. I think there was probably 100 folks as we had kind of two rounds of, of presentation last night, uh, at our open house. Uh, we are building a really, I think, powerful and connected community program where people are excited to engage, they're excited to share their perspectives and it leads us and I think will lead us if we listen to them, to better outcomes that'll serve them and our community better long-term. So, um, yeah, I would, I would love to, to be respectful of one another if we're going to continue the conversation.
And I, I think there was some miscommunication because I think you received what I was trying to say. I was trying to ask the council if we need more education. And the reason I asked that, we used to have Budget 101 meetings, we used to go to Budget Retreats, we would have, our whole retreat was based on our budget. That's why I was asking because Steve brought it up about the finance committee because he said he needed to understand more about the finances, so he was going to go for the finance. I wasn't judging you on what you knew about the budget. I was trying to see if we needed more education on the budget because it, it's, um, for recreation, we, and I'm sorry to say this and it's not to hurt your feelings, we don't have to have recreation. And that's what hurts is we have to do those basic things, our roads. We don't even have to do parks. We could let our parks go, but we have to have roads. We don't even have to have police. We can have the sheriff come in. It's those things that I was trying to find out if we needed more education. I was not trying to hurt your feelings at all and I, I saw you light up and I knew I hit a button that I was not trying to hit. I wanted to know because a lot of times with our city, I feel left out of a lot of things and, sorry. I don't feel like the city is engaging council enough on certain decisions. I feel sometimes we're railroad right over. And if you want to have a good council and city relationship, you talk to each other, you have an opinion about something. I don't get that anymore and that's where I'm coming from. That's why I was trying to ask you if you were getting collectively enough about the budget. But it was nothing to do about your personal knowledge on, um, being mean to you. I was not trying to do that at all because...
Can we vote for the question? Oh, we're not voting on this. But we, we are recommending it to go to...
Well, I...
I, I should look at my...
I just not consent to you. I think this is a...
I'll, I'll look at the thing.
I just wanted to follow up. Brian, to one question, you said we have to do the budget. We've been doing the budget all the time. So, it's kind of like saying we don't have the staff to do the budget and that's what I'm afraid of. And we're having outside company from outside our state and our state is different than other budgets. And so, it, I just, I was just really surprised at, and we're using same one as Kenmore is using and, and why isn't Linwood or Edmunds using somebody like this who have greater budgets? We're a smaller city.
So, am I, to understand, this is going to be a separate item on the agenda and not on consent next week?
We'll, we'll take it off the consent. But we are going to vote on it.
Next meeting.
At the next meeting.
And can we add this to our newsletter and talk about the expense of why we're doing this so people understand the reasoning behind it? Because if it goes out on Facebook, that we're spending $100,000 to figure out our budget, I mean, I, I'm just trying to solve some problems before they get out there.
We're just putting this on, on the agenda as a separate item and then if we can have discussion at that time, we can have a discussion at that time. So, can we now move on to the next item, which is the review of the Feldman and Lee for Public Defender? Here's another one we're going to have to spend money on and this is mandated.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of council, um, missing something here. So, both federal and state law require the city to provide an attorney for individuals who are charged with misdemeanor, gross misdemeanors and who are unable to afford an attorney on their own. And the Feldman and Lee contract that we currently have is set to expire at the end of this year, December 31st, 2025. Uh, current cost for that contract is $18,000 per month. Feldman and Lee has requested to renegotiate that contract due to changes in conditions and, um, uh, increased costs. The, uh, new contract, six months only, and that is to, um, incorporate whatever the Washington State Supreme Court decides on the public defense caseload standards, uh, which that expected, that decision is expected relatively soon. Um, the, uh, new contract would be for $26,500 per month and a pretty substantial increase. Um, the alternative would be to issue a request for proposal from other, uh, public defense firms. However, when staff looked at other cities who have done something similar recently, um, Bothell did not receive any, uh, responses to their RFP. Shoreline, I just want to make sure I'm saying this correctly here. Uh, Edmunds just approved their public defense contract last December. Um, and, uh, Shoreline issued an RFP in September and only received one response, which was from their current firm. So, that's the reason that we're bringing the contract increase in front of you this evening and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, anyone? Okay.
So, this is a requirement that we have to have and we, we, we can't, we can't say that we don't, we do not have to have a public defender.
Not unless we don't arrest people.
So, can we, um, ask the city, and Erin, this is kind of what I wanted and please, when I question you, I, I know how smart you are and I, I just feel really bad that you think I was trying to question your knowledge and, and say something bad about your personality because, no. Um, is can the city bring back to the council or the finance committee what we have to spend money on? And I'm not trying to be mean and think of it, I'm just educating myself on what we have to spend money on. And I know we have that in presentations. So, that would be nice for our next meeting to have what the city has to spend money on so we know because when we go out and we want to talk about the pool, Erin, I'm probably like the number one person for, I talked about it at Park and Rec, about the importance of having kids outside, having them learn swimming, how to do different stuff. But it would be nice to know what we have to spend money on. But it would be nice to know what we have to spend money on. And our city has to know that. And so, that's where I'm coming from with that.
We can provide that.
Anyone? Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. So, this would be an area where I would like the city to go out and do an RFP. I appreciate that, based on the research that we've done, we feel like there is a low likelihood of there being an outcome different than we are at currently. But I think as the conversation about the budget we just had reflects, you know, we have a 47% increase proposed to us in the middle of a contract. We have a contract in place. And while I appreciate our public defenders services very much, and I value the work that they do, and I think it's important work that they do, and I recognize that there are real challenges with the cost of labor, with the cost of doing business. Like, we are navigating those same things. And I can't imagine we could go to them and say, "Hey, we're having some real budget challenges. Will you decrease our contract cost 47%?" So, this would be an area where I can't imagine, I think, again, if we want to talk about going out to the public, I can't imagine, you know, saying to our public, "We had a contract in place. We decided, you know, to renegotiate and pay 47% more for that same service without at least seeing what else is out there in terms of options." So, I appreciate the recommendation. I typically, my perspective is typically aligned with staff's recommendations. And I do feel like this is a place where due diligence, whether or not it ultimately leads us to the same place, is in the best interest of our community in terms of knowing versus believing. And so, I won't support moving forward with the amendment to the contract, given we have a contract in place, and assuming that we, you know, need to look at other options. My ask would be that we go out and do a request for proposal and see what we get.
So, if we go out and we get nobody, can we go back to Feldman and Lee? Or will they ask for more money at that time?
Sure. So, if the amendment's not proposed, Feldman and Lee has notified the city that they'll submit the 90-day letter, which is a provision of the current contract, which basically terminates the contract at the end of 90 days. An RFP process will likely take 60 to 90 days. And in my opinion, the uncertainty around the Washington State Supreme Court decision on public caseload standards creates an environment where likely the only bid we would get would be from Feldman and Lee. My opinion, obviously, we don't know that unless we issue one. But that's the environment that I see.
And if they come in higher than what we're going to talk about here?
We would be bound by that.
That is what we're, so we're going to be looking, so do you have another opinion on that?
Thank you, Mayor Mary. Yeah, I mean, that is absolutely part of the challenge. But I wanted to go further in looking at the uncertainty that you point out with the Supreme Court decision. I mean, I guess, let me back up by saying, you've heard me say this before, and I think we need to have a full work session on this as well, to really get a full understanding and get our arms around the criminal justice system and all the different pieces. I think we are so fortunate to have our police in place and providing public safety and securing our community, and I think we have a lot of faith in them. But you know what? The criminal justice system doesn't back up our police. Bottom line is, they do a great job protecting us, and then we put people into the court system, and the court system fails. And we've got to figure out how to address that. And, you know, we're paying public defenders, we're paying, what, two, is it two times more than it costs to prosecute the same person? Just seems outrageously insane to me. There's something wrong with the system. Then you've got the judges and the jails and all the other different parts. So, this is just one small piece of it, and it's got a huge amount of uncertainty, because we don't even have a decision from the Supreme Court. So, walk us back, Jeff, if you will, with, this is to put, they're saying, "We're going to increase our costs, or we're going to walk away." And we have a contract, as Councilmember Murray points out, we've got a contract with them for $18,000 through the end of the year. But they're saying, "We don't care. We're going to invoke the 90-day clause and walk away from that if you don't increase..." I mean, they're threatening, and as Councilmember Somer points out, this is, we're required to provide public defense, as well as prosecution costs. And so, we're required to do it. We've got a public defender that is threatening to walk away if we don't increase the amount, recognizing there's still a decision to be made from the Supreme Court determining what the caseloads of public defense can and may be, which is going to cause additional pressure on our budget, by the way, in the future. And so, tell us a little bit, give us the, as long as we're here and talking about this subject, and recognizing that it's only one small piece of a much bigger problem that we need to address, but yet one that we're now being forced to isolate from the big picture because of our public defenders basically threatening us. And where we are as far as what they're, so we kind of got a small piece of the picture of what they're talking about doing. And this contract, the extension, the additional, would take us to, for the rest of the year, not even that, right, six months. Yeah, six months. And then we're going to have to renegotiate again, because the Supreme Court is going to be making a, maybe making a decision sometime in the next six months, which will then put additional pressure on the public defense system, or give the public defense system additional ability to increase costs on us.
So, we do, you mentioned the work session about public safety costs. So, we do have that planned, and it's on your forward-looking calendar. I can't remember the exact month we have it scheduled for, but it is on there. So, we will get that taken care of and make sure that you all have that information. The way I approach this, well, the uncertainty is created by the caseload standards. Because when that concern was brought to light last year, we did some back-of-the-envelope math and basically tripling what our public defense costs would be. That is included in your budget for 2025 and '26, because it's better to have and not need than need and not have. So, we did budget for those numbers within the parameters of what we knew at the time, the best information available. Because this contract is for a six-month period, I am in favor of doing an RFP after the Supreme Court makes their determination. Unfortunately, I don't, the window there is small, because we have the 90-day letter from our public defender that tells us, you know, 90 days, you're no longer going to have a public defender if, you know, this contract increase isn't approved. So, my recommendation would be to move forward with this contract, even with the increased costs, even though we have a contract in place now. And then, at the termination period at the end of June, to issue an RFP after we know what the caseload standards are finalized. And then move forward with whoever submits at that point.
Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem brings up a good point about Washington State and our judicial system. The first thing is that the Bar Association is recommending this. Then it goes to the Supreme Court. It's also, and I get, what is a Bar Association, and what is the Supreme Court, and what is this, and what is that? So, then I'm going to have to, you know, really educate myself, what is all this? Because it just got passed that, you know, if you want to be a lawyer, you don't have to pass the bar exam anymore to be a lawyer in the state of Washington. Did you know that? Yeah. So, go to school. I'm a lawyer. No test. So, the system is flawed. So, like, we have a lobbyist to do things for us. Maybe, is there a lobbyist for the Bar Association or the Supreme Court? You know, we need to know, who's going to ask these people, or, you know, say, "We don't want it." And an article here says that the State Supreme Court is seeking the public's opinion on whether it's a good idea or not. What are they going to, "Hi, this is the Supreme Court. This is, do you think it's a good idea for this?" "No, I don't." "Okay, thank you." I mean, you know, how are they getting this opinion when nobody even knows about it? So, that's kind of a joke. So, anyway, I'm putting a little humor in it, because it's ridiculous. And no one knows what a Bar Association is, and no one, you know, they think they know what a Supreme Court is. But, so, you know, who's going to be in our corner to fight some of this stuff? So, just wanted to throw that out. Thank you.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. Quick question. Oh, sorry, Steve on I.
Oh, it's just Steve. Go ahead. Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you. Yeah, all good. Thank you. It sounds like we're trying to do a tally right now, and I've heard some "I won't" and a lot of "I" language. I just want to make sure I get mine in there, which is to say, wonderful conversation. You know, very educational on a lot of levels. I always get a little disappointed that, I don't think very many residents take the time to actually watch what we say. And maybe they read the write-up, and this never makes it in the write-up. But this is where, you know, you really get a chance to see what people are thinking and how we interact. That said, you know, I want to preface this just to say, I appreciate the city manager's compromise of not doing RFP now until we know what the Supreme Court's going to say, which could go either direction, unfortunately. And then doing the RFP versus, let's do it now and potentially find out it's exactly going to be what the other cities are having, because that's how the empirical process works. So, there's no reason to think that a couple of months later, somebody wants to jump in. Because I've gone with, well, maybe they didn't like the city. And like, no, it's about crime and the justice system. And right now, they've got the upper hand, which, for the record, has been a deep hole for them. So, this upper hand that we think they have right now isn't even close to parity of what these folks should have been getting paid for. I really equate the public defenders to my line of work, human services, except they're defending people that we think are scum, right? Therein lies like, wow, that's a true champion right there. And as one who has had the honor of knowing a number of public defenders and understanding how committed they are, but that work was very underpaid, this is unfortunate. Because I don't think this money is going to hit their pockets, it's going to hit the system. But nonetheless, here we find ourselves. So, that's my way of saying, I would support the RFP, provided my city manager, who I believe we hired to run the city, and we advise him, I would take his word, that he spent a lot of time thinking about this and checking in with other people, that I can trust that his opinion is the one to follow. Which is my way of saying, I would have followed the original one. Let's just go ahead and pay this contract before these people realize they give this 90 days us for whatever reason. Especially if they're listening to us talk about them right now. I'm like thinking to myself, hey, where's the, let's be cordial to the people who are helping us, because we are not being very kind in this conversation, if I may be a little more candid. But that said, here we find ourselves, and I just want to acknowledge, thank you for that work. Congratulations, if that's the word to be used, that this is where you all find yourselves. I'm talking to the Public Defender Association at this point. Because again, what I didn't say, which is very absent, because my screen is black and I'm not sitting there, I'm black. And although in the state of Washington, we're probably not talking about that many black people, when you look across this nation, I'm very happy to think that, wow, while we still can, I might actually get some good defense for people who are just unfortunately poor, and that often aligns racially, right? So, just putting that out there, like, hey, I'm not in the vacuum, nor is anyone. But at the same time, I have a city manager whose job it is to run this city, and his advice, I take, in this particular case, as a, hey, it's a gamble either way. So, I would rather us go ahead and pay, and then figure out what's going to happen when that Supreme Court really says how much we're going to pay. So, hopefully that was clear enough. If not, that's what I just said. You could play this back and listen to it again.
Okay, Councilmember Woodard, we have to extend the meeting, so Mayor Pro Tem, wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to extend the meeting until 10:45.
The move in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we're until 10:45. Did you have any more to say, Councilmember Woodard?
No, I'm good. Like I said, I support the city manager's compromise of, let's wait to do the RFP.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a follow-up question, I guess, in terms of the back-of-the-envelope calculations, Jeff. Did we do those based on three times our $18,000 a month budget? Or three times one and a half times percent that? Because that is, I mean, it's a significant difference when we talk about, and that's part of my concern, is that we're setting a precedent of what we're paying that then is going to be tripled, whether that is by Feldman or by some other organization who looks at submitting a future RFP. And so, that is a big driver for me in terms of not agreeing to this, because I think this is public record. You know, we put out an RFP three months from now, everybody's going to go, what are they paying for services currently? And, oh, if caseloads are cut in a third, and let me please be honest, like, I support adequate caseloads for our public defenders. Everybody deserves a quality defense. And, you know, it is one of the reasons that I am concerned about this amendment that's before us, though, is because it isn't even just the 47% increase that's being proposed. It's potentially three times that, right? And so, I guess I'm just curious, did we look at, when we looked at the back of the napkin and what we put in the budget, before the proposed change or after?
Yeah. I was just doing some math, because I remembered the final number, but not what we're talking about. But, so, we did an inflationary factor, $18,000 plus 3% year-over-year. Did not expect, and at the time, we were looking at this back of the math, we didn't know that there would be a requested negotiation. That said, we also planned for it at the start of the year. So, your budget number, because we thought, listening sessions, as Councilmember Ryan noted, Supreme Court was holding, we thought initially, when we first heard this, we were developing the budget, that these would at least, sorry, these, these meaning the reduced caseloads, would be implemented or at least structured to start at the beginning of 2025. That obviously hasn't happened, but the budget amount was there. So, I can't say 100, with 100% certainty, but I would imagine, depending on when the Supreme Court makes a decision, which hopefully will be the end of this month, early next month, we will know where those budget numbers will work out. But there is some room there, because it didn't start in January.
Thank you. Appreciate the additional context.
Okay, Councilmember Woodard, is that your hand that is up again, or you didn't take it down?
Apologies, I got used to a timing out. Nope.
Yes, please. I would like it off the consent agenda.
Okay, we'll take this off the consent agenda, and we're going to have to make it back from Olympia for sure. Did you have more to say before we move on? Yes. Okay, so now, we are going to move on to the agenda, which will be a little bit different now, of the February 20th meeting. Did everyone take a look at it? I looked at it earlier today. I can remember any of it now.
Yeah. Mayor, we will also have an item for the hearings examiner that will be added shortly. Mayor, we will also have an item for the hearings examiner that will be added shortly. It'll be part of the agenda packet that goes out tomorrow afternoon. It's a contract extension for through December 31st, 2027.
Okay, so that'll be added to the agenda?
To the regular.
Regular agenda. All right. Anyone else?
The other two items will come off.
Yes.
Baker Tilly contract for the Long Range Task Force and the agreement with Feldman and Lee as separate agenda items.
Yes.
And LTAC.
Oh, and LTAC, yes. What was that going to?
It needs to be separate, because Councilmember Ryan is part of the, yeah.
Oh, that's what went over my head.
Right.
Okay. Uh-huh. All right, then we can move on to council comments. Are there any council comments? Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief, I know it's late, but while it's, I guess, fresh in mind, I wanted to just mention sidewalks and sidewalk conditions, particularly after our snow last week, you know, with cold weather, a lot of our sidewalks are still really icy. And so I guess, one, ask in terms of city action, I think we've done some really good work in terms of education around waste bins, and I would love to see us work on an education campaign around snow removal as well, so that folks understand both what their obligation is, as well as, you know, the best way to do that. And then I guess I would love to talk about, you know, at some point in the future, kind of city response to property that, sidewalks that don't fall in front of a homeowner or business owner's property. I think, for instance, I went over the 228th overpass here, I think just yesterday, so we're like a week out from any snow, I mean, and that thing is slick and icy, and there is not a good way for a pedestrian to get through there, and there's not a great alternative. So I think we just need to think about those things as weather patterns shift. I know usually we're used to snow melting, you know, the next day or the same day, and I think as things have shifted, it seems like it's sticking around longer the last several years, so I think we just need to kind of adjust and make sure we have plans accordingly, so we'd love to talk about that at some point.
Our Public Works Director and I were talking about that today.
Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief, 31 words if I did the count. At an upcoming council meeting, I would like a presentation on the financial implications of the World Cup landing in our county. That might have been 35.
All right.
Will do.
Okay. Councilmember Solmore?
I wouldn't bring it up, but it's kind of time-sensitive, so kudos to Rick for bringing this up. We were on the Left One Committee, and he brought up the Senate Bill 5085, and I was just on the Ways and Means Committee, and I thought it was today, Rick, but I don't know that it was going to go up, and I saw a couple other bills, but we're always talking about finances right here, and most of what we have done in the past, too, we've rallied to other cities to be on board with what we do and different stuff. So Left One, and I think our council needs to understand about the Left One funds, the state is trying to get some money out to help with their budget. And then also, what we'd like to do is, with our lobbyist in our city, is to promote that when that fund is all said and done, and there's a lot of money in it, that it goes back to the city and not the state. So we want to see what that language says, because the cities are the ones who pay into it and pay the claims. So that's something that we want to follow up on, and I'm not sure when it's in the Ways and Means Committee, it might have been yesterday, but we met on Tuesday, and we thought it was Thursday, but we want to follow up on that, because that's quite a bit of money in there.
How many Left One members do we have that we're covering?
Because we took fire out.
Oh, okay, so now we're down to 11?
Yeah. I'll have to double check.
We were in the 20s before.
Yeah, because we took the fire out.
Fires out.
Okay.
And we haven't lost anybody since then, so.
Yes.
May I?
Yes.
To add to that, the state wants to take the Left One funds out and combine it with tiers Plan One and peers Plan One, and they want, I believe, put it in the general fund.
Of course.
So, and I think with the original Left One agreement, it was made so the state could not take the money at all, ever. So they're breaking the law.
That's what we want, property, yeah, but breaking the law.
They took a million dollars out of the real estate fund.
They raid the funds all the time.
Yeah. And that was put in by real estate brokers with their renewals. Anyways.
They raided the left and tiers and peers, yeah, before.
Anyone else with their hands up before we adjourn? Okay. We're adjourned.
Good night.
Good night.
I got to be up in four and a half hours.